Looks like we're ready to go, Jennifer. All right, good. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City Council meeting for the city of Edina. It is Tuesday, April 4th, 2023, and it is 7:03 PM. A couple of things to go over before we call the meeting to order. As Director Benarott mentioned, we are doing this meeting in a hybrid sort of fashion. Has been our practice since the beginning of COVID. Some people may be watching on cable TV or at edinamn.gov live meetings or on Facebook, and you're able to participate in community comment and the public hearings tonight by calling this number that's going to show up on the screen, 786-496-5601. And there's the conference PIN number. Enter that PIN number plus the pound sign and then press star one to speak to the operator. The operator will get you to Director Benarott and then bring you in to the council for your testimony. And if you're calling in on a community comment matter, remember you cannot comment on something that's on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing. So having provided that information, let's call the meeting to order, and I'll ask our clerk Sharon Allison to call the roll.
Councilmember Agnew?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Riss?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. Let's next do the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, you may have noticed that we have Assistant City Manager Lisa Schaefer with us this evening in the absence of our City Manager Scott Neal. Next on the agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda. Is there anyone on the council or on staff that wishes to modify the agenda in any form?
No modifications.
All right. Council, all right, is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda in its published form?
So moved.
I second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Agnew seconds the approval of the meeting agenda as published. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the adoption of the motion of state, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And now we are on to community comment. That portion of the agenda, let's get that number back up on the screen again for folks that might be listening in. We're going to listen to folks from the audience first, and then we'll go to people that may be appearing virtually. So if you want to come up and you're in the audience, please come back up. We're going to do the audience first, audience participants first, and then we'll go to the people that are listening in virtually. So go ahead.
Thank you very much.
And good evening. I am Arnie Bigby. I live at 7621 Edinburgh Way, Edina, Minnesota, 55435. As you can see, I'm a white person. I've lived in Minnesota all of my life. Growing up in Minneapolis in 1952, when I was nine, with my mother and my sister, we were evicted from our home and saved from being homeless by the then-new Glendale Town Homes Federal Housing Projects in southeast Minneapolis. I attended public schools and the University of Minnesota. I earned money delivering the Star Tribune early and later during high school and college in part-time jobs in downtown Minneapolis. All junctures of my learning and development and employment, adults encouraged me to succeed in spite of my disadvantaged beginnings. I'm now retired and I'm grateful for the privileges of my whiteness that my whiteness has provided. Now I want to find ways that Edina can provide this same pathway for young people, especially those of color and different ethnicities. Their presence will strengthen the future and fabric of our city. Thanks to you, the City Council, Edina has helped create affordable housing to make our city accessible to people wanting a place to live. It's up to those of us who live here now to welcome these families, just like the Yancey family that helped birth this community did. Over a century ago, Edina and other communities began to create rules and covenants to maintain advantages for some businesses and homes, mostly businesses and homes of white and wealthy people. We then made these standards legal and called them zoning ordinances designed to preserve the character of an area or neighborhood of our city. The federal government also did this on a larger scale for people who are not white, and instead of ordinances, they called them treaties. When those treaties did not satisfy white people over time, they were arbitrarily revoked, leaving indigenous people displaced and disenfranchised. It's time to end these zoning practices so we can welcome all people to our entire community to live, to play, to work, to shop, contribute here, and for all of them, especially of those of color and other ethnicities, to be invited and encouraged to participate in the governance of our community, just as the Yanceys were and did. So, Juneteenth, 2023 is a perfect time to take down the barriers created on behalf of my whiteness. Juneteenth, 2023 is a perfect time to cast off our bondage to those outdated zoning rules. Juneteenth, 2023 is a perfect time to roll out an Edina greeting of all our welcome here without exception. Juneteenth, 2023 is the perfect and special and historic time for Edina to be a welcoming community for everyone. Please do what it takes to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bigby. Anyone else in the audience this evening?
My name is Robert Cundia with 4521 Drexel Avenue in the Country Club District. I'm here to share my concerns about the construction project at 4633 Arden Avenue in the historic Country Club District. This property was before council in October with respect to a design appeal on behalf of the developer. Less than 90 days later, the property was listed for sale with the following listing details. The primary listing photo was a design that was specifically rejected by this body. The listing described the scope of work as all-new construction from the foundation up. The listing described the home as fully designed and approved. The listing changed the build date of the historic home from 1938 to 2023. This is concerning for obvious reasons. The design being advertised was rejected by both the HPC and this body. All-new construction in the historic Country Club District is not allowed. Per city planning, despite there still being active building permits for this property, there are no approved plans on file to be viewed, and a build date of 2023 indicates that the builder is committed to the continued demolition of the historic 1938 structure. In essence, the developer has promised a buyer a product that, if they were to deliver it, would put them in direct conflict with their COA, direct conflict with the plan of treatment, direct conflict with city code, direct conflict with the HPC, direct conflict with this council, and with the state's environmental statutes. So the natural question is, how is the developer going to resolve that conflict? In a recent HPC meeting, they answered this question for us. This is a quote, "As a builder with clients, they like something, they don't like something. I want them to be happy more than, you know, I want the HPC to be happy too, but I want my clients to be happy a little bit more because they are my client." They went on to say, "If you have an accountant or a lawyer and they're pushing the envelope for you, that's kind of what they do. We are always going to push a little bit, you know, to make the client happy. So you know, that's what I do." Given that every home that this developer has worked on in the district since the adoption of the current plan of treatment has suffered significant, if not total, historic integrity loss as evaluated by your heritage preservation consultant, I would offer to council that this developer pushes the envelope too far, too often. They've already been in the violation of the COA for 4633 Arden, and they've now quite literally advertised that they are going to continue to do the same. And so my questions and requests for council are as follows. COAs are expressly approved subject to a scope of work that's presented to the HPC. The scope of work described in this advertisement matches in no way that scope that was presented. So why is this COA still active? Similarly, permits require not only an approved COA, which should clearly be revoked, but also plans, and the city planning department has confirmed that if you walk down the hall, there are no plans on file to be viewed for this project. So we have a historic home in a historic district with a violated COA. They should have no COA, and yet they have plans to continue work under the auspices of what? And lastly, a sale of this property closed last week, so there are now new owners. I'd ask what steps the city planning department has taken to inform these new owners of what is or is not allowed with respect to this property. I'd remind you, as you consider those things, that the city said that they will take all steps to ensure that no property is damaged as a result of any certificate of appropriateness being issued. And lastly, I'd just say, you know, perhaps I'm imagining a worst-case scenario, but I would really hate for there to be some future conflict between this builder and a client on one side and the HPC and the city on the other side, where they violated a COA and destroyed the history of a home as a result of their client's wishes. I can't imagine that happening, but I'd really hate for it to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cundy.
Good evening. My name is Christina Brooks. I live at 6566 France Avenue South, condo number 810. Good evening, Mayor Hovland and City Council members. First, I want to express sincere appreciation for the time that you dedicate to your jobs, appreciation for staying till 12:00, 12:45, and also for taking time to consider my input and recommendation about what could shorten your council meetings. While I understand the desire to shorten meetings, I'm very troubled about the proposal to eliminate public hearings at city council meetings on proposed new developments. Today and in the foreseeable future, hundreds of millions of dollars will be invested in projects with significant impact on the landscape, livability, and finances of Edina residents for years to come. I'm quite surprised that you would consider eliminating the opportunity for those very residents to have public engagement with the elected officials making decisions about those projects. Writing letters and emails, posting on message boards, and making phone calls to comment on proposals that are up for council vote is not the same as public discourse. Public discourse gives residents the opportunity to express their opinions to their elected officials in an open and transparent setting, which also creates visible public record of voter reaction to proposed projects. While input at the earliest stage of the project through public hearings of the Planning Commission is very important, I believe it is not enough for the following reasons. First, the Planning Commission is not an elected body which is accountable to the citizens who elected them. Second, each development project encounters many changes along the way to approval, which necessitates testimony on multiple iterations of the project before it's approved. And third, having the Planning Commission members interpret and present citizen input to the city council is very different from giving Edina residents the opportunity to make their case to council members directly in their own words at an open public venue. Since the birth of the United States, public discourse has been foundational to our country's system of government. At a time in our country's history when divisiveness is at fever pitch, when distrust of government is at record high, and citizens are seeking more input in every level of government, I believe it is important for the Edina City Council to have more direct engagement with the people it represents, not less. So for these reasons, I ask you to reject any proposal or idea that would eliminate public hearings on proposed new developments at Edina City Council meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Anyone else in the audience?
Janie Weston, 6136 Brookview Avenue. I want to add one more very important thing to what the previous person just said. I get to look at all of you in the face, see your body language, your facial expressions. I can pose a question to you. I can ask you to raise your hand. I elect you. I don't elect the Planning Commission members. But something else happens with public comment at the planning or beyond the Planning Commission meeting, at this meeting. That is, cameras are on, the public watches these. I can present things also, not just to you. It is presented to the citizens of the city, and they can look at it live, they can look at it after the fact, and they can go back, repeat, they can freeze frame it. That is very, very important in the whole process of public comment and opinion on what's going on in the city. I really object to it being taken away. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weston. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the council? Let's go now to folks that we might have with us online. Director Benarott, anybody?
I do have some people on the line. Operator, will you please unmute the line of our first caller? And caller, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record. Operator, please let the caller know when the line is open.
Hello?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Amy Brown, 5512 Park Place in Edina. And I was just calling because I'm really concerned about the use of TIF by the city and where we stand financially. The issue really is, is we have revenue needs and expense needs now, and we're deferring those things 20 years into the future. And I look at it, and I look at the schools, there need for bulletproof glass after what you saw in Nashville in the dramatic video there and how sad that was. You look at things that we need a third fire station from the Five Bugles study somewhere in northeast Edina. And then, you know, I've come before you before regarding these four rail intersections that are probably well north of $1 million apiece that need to be invested in so that we can prevent a tragic situation like happened in eastern Ohio or more recently what happened in western Minnesota there where they had to evacuate the town. God help us if something like that ever happens here. So we have serious public safety issues that require funding now. So putting off funding to help build a hotel at 7200 France or to help Mr. Carlson with another development, the suburbs are not in the same situation as downtown Minneapolis. I don't know if you saw the news this morning. AT&amp;T is actually moving out of their building downtown to come to the suburbs. So I just really struggle with the whole use of the Buck War Clause and the use of TIF. And I understand we want to, you know, we want to make our community vibrant, but there are some serious, serious public safety issues that require serious, serious funding amounts that need to be dealt with now and not 20 years from now. Not when Emmett graduates from high school. He needs that bulletproof glass today at Concord. So I really hope that you really take a much harder line on the use of TIF, ban it all together, quite frankly, and look at the needs of the citizens right now, because we're not going to make it the first or second phase if we don't have that investment now. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Operator, will you please unmute the line of our next caller? And caller, please begin with your name and address.
Hello?
Hello, this is Richard Stein. My address, 7016 Bristol.
Would you please restate your name, please, Richard?
Hello, my name is Richard Stein.
Thank you.
You're welcome. As I said before, my address is 7016 Bristol, and I'm calling to address what Christina and Janie Weston already addressed. And I object to the proposed process that the Planning Commission is putting forward for the city council to consider, and that process is how new properties get developed, okay? You've heard from me, as I've said, each one of you on the city council, my wife and I said it, each one of you on the city council, our feelings on this process, this proposed process. And I wish you to hear from me, although you can't see me, hopefully you can understand the expressions on my face when I'm saying, I hope you hear from me. And I don't want you to hear from me from the Planning Commission in the future because I suspect or feel my thoughts, my words will be filtered or summarized by the Planning Commission and not necessarily the feelings that I express. Also, the Planning Commission is trying to say, has said yet recently about this new process is more in line with how other suburbs in the area are doing their processes, and one of the steps that they're trying to compare is no public input at the city council level, okay? The city council is of my elected bodies, the members. The Planning Commission is not my elected members, and thus I don't want to have my words filtered by non-elected members. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stein.
Thank you.
I have no other callers on the line at this time.
Okay. All right, one more chance for anybody in the audience to come forward. I see some people exiting but not coming forward. All right, let's move on. This is our practice after community comment, have the city manager, in this case, our Assistant City Manager Lisa Schaefer, respond to community comments that were made at the prior meeting. Assistant Manager Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor. We had one community comment at the last meeting. It was from Ms. Janet Katoue, and she had outlined concerns that she had related to the Board and Commission recruitment and selection process. We did depart from our normal procedure, and council did address and respond to her concerns at the last meeting. I just wanted to add that we do continue to look at that process every year and consider feedback that we receive from council and the community. We have, for the last couple of years, had on the council budget work plan a goal of continuing to make improvements to that process to increase equitable representation. And so changes that we have made to the process have been with that in mind. I am sure that it is not perfect, but we will continue to engage in those discussions and bring more feedback and potential changes to that will be discussed before the next process.
Good, thank you. Yeah, I know Ms. Katoue's in the audience this evening, and I was out of town for several days, so I was a little bit slow responding to her email about getting together, and we're going to do that. I'm going to... Member Pierce has offered to meet with us as well, or Heidi Lee, so we'll figure that out. If you send me some times and dates that would work for you, we'll try to find some common ground there and then get together to talk about some of your concerns. All right, let's move on then to the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove any item from the consent agenda? All right, is there a motion to adopt the items on the consent agenda in a single motion?
So moved.
Member Pierce moves. Member Jackson seconds the adoption of the items on the consent agenda in a single motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the items on the consent agenda in a single motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Now we move on to a short part of the agenda, which is Special Recognitions and Presentations. It is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and soon to be so in Edina, I suspect that we will pass this proclamation. Let me read the proclamation. "It is National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week, Sunday, April 9, 2023 through Saturday, April 15, 2023. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone or text the Edina Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunications of the Edina Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each public safety communicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year, now therefore the City Council of the city of Edina, Minnesota, does hereby proclaim the week of April 9 through April 15, 2023, as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in the city of Edina in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and our citizens and our public safety personnel safe." Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation as stated?
So moved.
Second. Motion by a member, Richard, second by a member, Pierce, to adopt the proclamation as read. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And we've got Janelle Harris, our dispatch supervisor, with us to accept the proclamation. I'm going to walk down and hand it to her, and then she's got a few remarks I think she wants to make on behalf of our communicators.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, well, thank you, Mayor Hovland, council members, Assistant City Manager, everybody. So as supervisor of the 911 Dispatch Center, I would like to thank you for recognizing the work of our 911 dispatchers who are celebrating National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week next week. We usually have a lot of food, a lot of celebration. This past year, our 911 dispatchers, who are often recognized as the first first responders, received both emergent and non-emergent telephone calls. These calls fall in the range of accidental missed dials all the way to the most serious of emergencies, as stated in the proclamation, like robberies, structured fires, and cardiac arrests. Every day, our dispatchers are making lifesaving decisions within seconds of receiving information. To paint a picture of a typical shift, our 911 center will staff about two to three dispatchers who work at consoles composed of five monitors fed from four computers and running more than 10 software systems at any one time. So the person sitting at the controls must know how to operate all the numerous technology networks, an elaborate multi-line telephone system, a statewide shared radio system, a local computer-rated dispatch system, and multiple record management systems, along with dozens of auxiliary components. So in our highly technical environment, not one of these systems stays the same for very long, which makes our dispatchers very skilled change agents. Case in point, also with the assistance of this council, we have implemented a brand-new computer-rated dispatch system and records management system that went into place in February of this year. Everybody in the department was provided quite a bit of training, but a lot of like our workflow processes and things like that are learned live as calls are coming in, things that you just can't teach in a classroom, they're kind of maneuvering. So as they're making all these critical decisions, they're also learning brand-new equipment. So hats off to them for sure. Our dispatchers are trained to perform heroic acts over the phone with quick recognition, specialized instruction, persistence, and most importantly, to meet empathy, committing to protect the personal safety and property of those in the community. And by doing this, they face challenges of both physical and emotional stressors every day. The city of Edina employs some of the most dedicated and professional 911 dispatchers in the state of Minnesota, hands down. I hope I've conveyed how hard these staff members work to maintain our very high customer service and public safety standards. I am so proud of their dedication, their compassion, and service, and I'm so grateful for this leadership's recognition of those same qualities. So on behalf of all the dispatchers who are working right now, thank you again for this very meaningful recognition.
Yeah, well, thank you, Ms. Harris. I'm here to give you a round of applause. Over here to give you a round of applause. For you personally and on behalf of your entire team, we know the incredible work that you do, and we know how much our citizens appreciate it because we hear about it on a fairly regular basis. And we're just so fortunate to have the high level of professionalism we have in our community through our dispatchers that provide those lifesaving services for both our public safety personnel and the people that live in our community. It's something our town would never give up. So we're not going to the county for dispatching.
Appreciate you to hear that, yes.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Miss, Member Rissler.
Just, I really appreciated being able to do a sit-along, and if council, other council members haven't done it, it is amazing to sit next to dispatch and see what they do. It's phenomenal.
Yes, absolutely. We're happy to host anytime.
Yeah, I wish everybody in our community could see our dispatch center, but for security reasons, obviously, it's not going to happen. But, Member Jackson.
I just wanted to say thank you so much, and I know the amount of concentration that that job takes, and so, just, I'm so grateful for everybody.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
All right, we've got a few public hearings. That's the next portion of the agenda. Telecommunicator Week was the only thing on the Special Recognitions and Presentations portion of the agenda. The public hearings tonight include, as I mentioned, four of those matters, and the first one is the potential issuance of a new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday sale liquor license for the Lynn Hall Edina LLC, which is down in the 50th and France neighborhood. And our Clerk Sharon Allison is going to review this matter for us.
Mayor Hovland, council members, just a quick review, this public hearing is scheduled because the Lynn Hall 3945 in the 50th and France area has applied for an on-sale intoxicating license. They currently have a wine and 3-2 beer license, and they're simply asking to move up to a full on-sale where they would be allowed to sell all intoxicating alcohol. A background check was done by the Police Department, and everything was found to be okay. They are in compliance with our city ordinance, and staff recommends approval.
All right, I noticed that you were asking about holding the, closing the public hearing at noon on April 10th, and would there be any reason that we couldn't deal with this this evening?
Not really, but it is just following the standard process or practice that we have for our public hearing matters.
Okay.
And that is how we advertised it, so if...
It is how we advertise it?
Yes, exactly.
All right, then we should be consistent with that. This is a public hearing matter. I'm going to open it up for public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to testify with regard to the potential issuance of a new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday sale liquor license to the Lynn Hall Edina? All right, I'm not hearing anything or seeing anybody coming forward. Anybody online that wishes to testify regarding the Lynn Hall upgrading their license?
I don't have anyone either. We haven't had much time pass since you opened the public hearing. As you know, there's a brief delay in the broadcast, so I would recommend we wait one minute before moving on, so we can give people an opportunity to call in. My clock shows it at 7:34, so I will come back to you at 7:35 or when I have a caller, whichever is first.
Thank you. All right, very good. With regard to this potential issuance of a new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday sale liquor license to the Lynn Hall Edina LLC, DBA, the Lynn Hall number 3945, staff, our Clerk Sharon Allison is suggesting that we close the public hearing on noon, at noon on April 10th, and continue the action on the item to the April 18 City Council meeting. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce, to close the public hearing on the matter involving the potential issuance of an on-sale intoxicating liquor license to the Lynn Hall on April 10th and continue the action on the item to the April 18 City Council meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried. And now, the next matter in the public hearing portion of the agenda is one that our Economic Development Manager, Bill Nuenendorf, has.
Apologies for the delay there. I'm Bill Nuenendorf, the city's Economic Development Manager, and here to present the recommendation to consider the creation of a new tax increment financing district. This is the, this would be called the 72nd and France II TIF district. There's already a 72nd and France I TIF district. That would, that would go away. The recommendation tonight is to hold a public hearing, to, the in-person public hearing to consider this action. There's no final decision being asked of you this evening. We'll defer that to the next meeting. This evening, I've got the presentation. It may look familiar, it's, it's the exact same presentation that we presented at the HRA meeting a few weeks ago. This evening, I'm joined by Jay Lindgren at Dorsey &amp; Whitney, he's our legal advisor on this project, and Rebecca Kers at Ellers Associates, she's our, one of our financial advisors on this project. When I'm finished with my presentation, of course, all three of us will be available for any questions that you might have. So I'll run through the background briefly, and then, again, happy to go into any further detail as you, as you see fit. But the project site is located on France Avenue between Gallagher and 72nd Street. It's a five-acre property that consists of two parcels. Both parcels have been long discussed in the community, they're currently vacant, and the previous buildings have been removed. The site were, were first improved back in the late 1960s and early 1970s, and for several decades, they functioned as very well-positioned office spaces. But over the decades, they fell into disrepair, low occupancy. One of the properties was actually condemned as being structurally unsafe and unsound, and sat vacant for several years, as, as, as we've seen. In 2019, the city commissioned a study, hired the Standtach Consulting Company to evaluate whether or not these sites would be eligible for possible use of tax increment financing. So the images on the screen right now are from 2019. And then, over the pandemic years, the situation just got worse. So back at that time, the buildings were found to be in substandard condition, and even last year, when they were removed from the site for safety reasons, they were still, still substandard, meeting the criteria of state statute for consideration of TIF. The buildings had really grown to be an eyesore, and when they were vacant, there was heavy instances of trespassing vandalism, just unsafe practices happening there. So the city really was pleased that they could be removed and hopefully see some progress on the site. These slides are from last summer, they just show some of the deteriorating conditions before they were removed. One of the other odd situations about this property is the stormwater situation. This is an overall map of the site. The area in bright red shows the flooding, the low, the low spots on the site, and you'll see that a great portion of the property is considered in that flooding area. It's the low spot, and it actually collects water not just from the property itself, but all the surrounding residential properties. So that's part of one of the challenges of the site. The developer doesn't just have to solve his own stormwater problem, he has to solve the problems for all of his neighbors as well. I mentioned the site's been talked about at length. Here's a sampling of some of the more significant proposals that the city has considered over the, over the years. We've been going on nearly 10 years of looking at proposals for this site. Several have been rejected. One was withdrawn, one was given consideration but died. In 2019, we thought we had one that could actually get built. I actually created a TIF, a TIF district to help fund some of those public improvements on that project, but ultimately, that was found to not be financeable, and that one died. The property then sold in 2020, and the, the current developer and ownership group considered a whole variety of proposals, from retail to office to medical to residential. We actually looked at this site quite extensively for the site of the new fire station, but ultimately settled on, on a different choice. So there's a lot of background that led to where we are today, and that is having an approved site plan where this project could be built in two phases. PUD number 16 was modified and approved in February of this year, and these are a couple excerpt slides that show that, that site per the current entitlements. So the, the point of tonight's public hearing, though, isn't about the site plan, that's been discussed at length. It's about helping to provide financial support to make it happen. We're recommending that tax increment, increment financing be used. This is one of the few economic development tools that's available here in Minnesota, and it allows the growth in the tax base to help fund these public improvements. When TIF is used in Edina, it should be, it's important to note, we don't use it on every project. In fact, the vast majority of projects are privately financed, but from time to time, there are unusual sites where it might be necessary to use TIF. Our practice and our policy here in Edina is to use TIF only when it's absolutely necessary to see a project happen. We make sure that the financial risk rests with the developer rather than the taxpayer. So we would only use TIF to reimburse a develop, a private developer for a project like this, to have payments using TIF after they've finished the project, after they've built the building, after they've delivered all those public improvements. And when it comes to sizing the amount of TIF that we'd consider for, for any developer on the site, that value would be commensurate with the value of the public benefits that are being delivered by the project. So we do apply several layers of scrutiny. Looking at how TIF is used in Edina as compared to some of our neighbors is what's shown in this chart. This is a sample of other cities nearby, primarily in Hennepin County. Edina's use of TIF is on the far right, the low end of this chart. About 1% of our tax base is currently involved in a TIF district. There's no right percentage, there's no wrong percentage, but as a general rule, our policy strives to use TIF as infrequently as possible, and this chart is a good example of how we practice that on a, on a annual basis. There are several steps that have to happen anytime a city wants to consider a TIF district. We're just at that first step. We've already presented the proposed TIF plan to the county, Hennepin County, we've presented to the Edina School District, we've presented it to the HRA Board, and last week, we presented it to the Planning Commission. Tonight's step is the public hearing in front of the City Council, and that is to consider action on the TIF plan itself. Now, the plan allows the city to draw the boundaries, set up the duration of the TIF district, and identify a general budget, but it does not authorize any specific spending. That would be considered in a separate step, what's shown in this chart as step two. That would, that would happen at the next meeting or possibly a meeting in May. So the proposed TIF plan is in your packet, it's about 85 pages. Happy to answer any questions about that, but I think I can summarize it in two slides. The, the property consists of five acres, two parcels, this map should look familiar. We're recommending that we terminate the previous TIF district that only applied to the old project and replace it with a new redevelopment district. The new district would last for up to 25 years. It would start in 2026, and it would terminate in 2051. How TIF works is that we grow the tax base and use that growth to fund these public improvements. Today, in 2023, the current tax capacity is a little bit over $200,000. When a project of this scale and this caliber is built on the site, that tax capacity or the tax base increases by a factor of nine. That's the kind of growth we like to see in Edina. It makes for a very stable budgeting process. The TIF plan includes a, a budget that identifies potential spendings from the site, and also how much could actually be collected there. We've sized this based on the maximum build-out that would be allowed by zoning, an office and a hotel, with a chance that maybe, if the hotel doesn't work, that it would turn into housing. Later tonight, you're going to hear a proposal for hotels, so I think that's the focus, but just to be safe, we did also consider the potential for housing when we wrote the TIF plan. So over 25 years, the incremental taxes would amount to about $34 million. Now, that's not the base taxes that still get distributed to the city, the counties, and the school, but that's the new taxes. And we've identified several different funding categories that we might consider in the future, everything from site improvements, utilities, affordable housing, and other types of improvements as well. That's a requirement of the, of the state's, state TIF statute to, to identify a general spending plan, and that's what we've proposed. The project itself, and I'm just going to fly through this because I think we've seen it a lot, the project that would be delivered is the same that was approved in the PUD zoning, the two-phase development. There's a number of public benefits, and we'll, we've discussed this back in January and February when we looked at a potential term sheet, and we'll discuss it again once we, once we get to the next step with the developer. But there are several different public benefits. In fact, over 50% of the site would be covered by a permanent public easement that gives the general public the rights to use that space, either for bicycling, for walking, for driving, for recreation, for stormwater purposes. And one of the other benefits to the city is while the public gets to use the space, it's still the developer's responsibility to maintain it. So we'd be getting a lot of, a lot of new sidewalks, a lot of new roadway, but that burden of maintenance does not fall on the city's public works crew, it rests with the developer. These are some images of the, some of the public frontages on France, the public plaza along Gallagher, and then I've got a slide of each one. The North-South Street that would help alleviate traffic on, on France Avenue and help provide interconnectivity between the two properties as well as the neighbors. That path is designed not just for motor vehicles, but also for bicyclists and pedestrians. New sidewalks on all perimeters of, of the property, a new plaza right in the center of the, of the property, some overlook areas that, that are also kind of smaller public plazas that overlook the, the stormwater basin. And then, the stormwater basin itself is something that would be available for shared use. This TIF plan also would enable the use, or the ability for the developer to meet our TIF policy and provide a more sustainable building that would be certified with LEED. And in the TIF plan, we also have, have set the stage to advance some of the city's equity and diversity goals, to ensure that in a, in a future TIF contract with the developer, that a portion of the work be made available to small businesses that are MBE or WBE certified, as well as to ensure that some of the construction jobs on the site are filled by people that are typically underrepresented in the construction industry, women and people of color in particular. The city engaged Ellers &amp; Associates to look at some of the fiscal impacts of this project, and just at a very high level, we, we've got a couple of charts that tell the story very well. This chart shows in green the typical annual growth of Edina's tax, tax base. It's on an upward trajectory, we like to see that. And then, in the blue bars, it shows the, the tax growth of these two-phase projects. So you can tell that the, the impact of these two projects far exceeds the average in Edina. This is one of those cases where you want to be above average, that's a good thing. We also looked at it, at this proposal a little bit differently. We also looked at this proposal a little bit differently to draw some hypothetical alternatives, like what if, for example, development would move forward without TIF? What's the impact to the community? So we outlined three different scenarios, kind of keeping the existing buildings that were there and just remodeling them. That certainly was an option last year. Doing a smaller-scale development that might not meet TIF, or it might not need TIF, but it also would not comply with our design standards, as compared to the project that's presented tonight in the TIF plan whereby even though it does require the use of TIF to move forward in the long term, it's still a better fiscal outcome for the community. So that is what this chart shows. And then just in conclusion, we've confirmed that the site does qualify as a redevelopment TIF district. There's a 50-page appendix in the TIF plan that documents all of that. We've confirmed with the Planning Commission last week that the proposal is consistent with the city's comprehensive plans. We've evaluated the financials by the developer, and we are convinced that the public benefits of the site will not be capable of being built without the use of TIF, and that the high construction costs require TIF to actually see this project move forward. So the conclusion of staff is that we should definitely consider the creation of the new TIF district here. We have prepared with our city attorney, with our attorneys on this, a resolution to that effect. It's in your packet, but it won't be considered tonight. It'll be considered at the next meeting. With that, I'm happy to stand for any questions and would welcome the public hearing as well.
All right. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Newnerv? Yes, go ahead. Member Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the history of this building, we've looked at this, the City Council's looked at this so many different times. Can you tell us a little bit about what made it fall into such disrepair? Was it, I've heard that it was on a gravel pit and so it had unsteady foundation. Is that, that's all I can remember hearing on that. Do you know?
That's correct, although I don't know what the full history of it is. It was the building at 7250 that was actually structurally unstable.
Okay.
So that's the one where I did the photos. For years, they had to put temporary shoring in it to keep it in an occupiable condition. At some point in time, the engineer that certified those temporary conditions was no longer comfortable certifying that. What led to that is probably a whole variety of things, mostly 50 years of use and maybe not proper maintenance. The site was formerly part of the gravel pit, it was right on the edge of the gravel pit. I don't know if that had any impact to the conditions of the building, but certainly as the buildings aged, they were not code compliant regarding insulation, handicap accessibility. The fundamental of being structurally safe to occupy is the biggest one, but we did inspect both buildings, found that they did meet the state's criteria to be defined as substandard or blighted, and that was the ultimate finding.
Terrific. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Member Risher?
Yes. Thank you, Director Newnerv. Could you please go back to page eight, or slide eight? Okay. And I did visit this area on Sunday when there was so much snow melt and there was all this water that was flowing. And one of the things that I noticed, and it was really kind of interesting, you know, you've got that deep, what do you call, is it a ravine or a trench? I'm not sure what it is. But I know the pond is going to be next to that, but what's really fascinating is to look at the properties that come up to it, and you notice that their backyards are what, you know, buffer it. And as we look at it, and if you were to stand on 72nd Street, you know, the ground does continue to rise up, but when you're in Bristol Circle, you notice that a lot of the driveways are sloping down into Bristol Circle. And then it appears as if water is flowing down. It ends up going down 60 or 72nd Street toward the east, and there is a stormwater opening so that you have water flowing down there. And I couldn't help but notice that we've got a project going on just a little bit to the north, the Bristol Mizelle, what are you calling it? The Linmar Basin. And so, you know, just looking at all of that, and then also looking at our maps that show the flood risks and also have all of the infrastructure and piping, I would ask that this would be added to the material in the report because I think, you know, we're getting a lot of pressure from, and I think this is a very good thing, you know, to be data-driven, and I can't help but wonder how much water will actually come from those houses around Bristol Court. You know, I think most of the water is going to either go, you know, into the paved area or be absorbed by their backyards unless they're putting their downspouts so they go all the way to the ravine, but you'd muck up your backyard, wouldn't you? I don't know if you can comment on that.
So I think I'll defer to Chad Milner, our city engineer, who can speak to the details of the stormwater much better than I can.
Thank you. Apologies for not getting that question earlier.
So I think I'll start with this map just to identify the drainage area. So this map is showing a little different drainage area than actually is there. So this purple section is correct. Right at this point, it just basically goes to the center line of these three roofs. So anything on the center line here goes into that basin. Anything that's on the west side of those homes or on Bristol Circle heads north, goes down the street in a whole different system. So this area picks up one, two, three, you know, six properties in this low area. There is a private pump station in there that will be private afterwards that pumps water up into that Linmar Basin area, the Bristol Court area in that part of the project. 72nd Street doesn't drain into it, actually heads west-east to France. That goes in a different direction. So that's the layout of the drainage. As part of their application, they've told us how much water gets here today before the project, how much is going to get there afterwards. We want to make sure that the risk isn't transferred to other properties and that they at least keep it the same as what's there today, if not make it better. So we have those stormwater reports that came with the original application for this development.
Thank you. Follow-up question. The basin will serve primarily the development site, correct? What percentage approximately do you think of water flowing into it comes from the neighboring residents right there?
It'll serve the same number of properties that it does today.
Volume of water, not number of properties.
I don't have that.
Okay.
I'd have to look at areas and look at the report in detail, but it's not changing. They're not adding more properties or taking any properties out. Same drainage areas as there.
Right. I'm just trying to get at the public benefit.
Sure.
Thank you. And I do have more questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. As I look at the material, I'm not seeing inclusion of the transition zones that comes from the Greater Southdale District Plan, and I think it's really important, I'm wondering why that wasn't included, and, you know, as we talk about the potential development going right up against a residential area, a hotel, a boutique hotel with a ballroom on the backside. How does that fit with the idea of creating transition zones?
So the reason we did not include the transition zone map in the TIF plan is because that transition zone is specifically limited to the land use. So that would be part of the land use decisions for the property, not the financing for the property.
Was it included in that, the earlier project?
Maybe Director Teague might remember?
Yeah, I don't recall specifically, but certainly this whole west side of France is considered a transition zone. It's something that can be discussed as part of the sketch plan later this evening, whether that's an appropriate use versus the apartment.
All right. Thank you. We're talking about public benefit, but we also need to address public risk, and I know that was also brought up in the report. And I'm looking at page 12, the paragraph that is about the probable impact of the district on fire and EMS services is not expected to be significant. Newly fully sprinkled non-aged restricted apartment or mixed-use commercial office buildings are expected to generate approximately 21 to 28 calls annually. There is no, it does not appear as if there's data that reflects the scenario of having a boutique hotel. Was that information gathered, or was this just data that reflects the narrative that it will be apartments and a commercial office space?
Good question. Let me refer to, so you're looking at page 12 of the TIF plan? So as part of the city's process anytime we consider a TIF district, we do route that information to each of our departments to get their input. The concern is, does this proposal create other downstream impacts that we would not have otherwise considered? So we reach out to engineering, police, Public Works, and Fire. I share with them the same plan that was in the approved packet, so it would have been what was shown here. We identified two possibilities for the 7200 property, either an apartment or a hotel. And so each of those departments provided a response back to us regarding what their concerns or what their impacts might be. So certainly each one of those departments is aware that the 7250 would be an office, the 7200 would either be apartment or hotel. And they provided the response. That's on page 12 of the report.
Thank you. And this is the last question. When I'm looking at the charts and these neat charts that are provided, it's the second one, and I don't have a page number on it. I think it was, but it's tax calculation, and office is listed, apartment is listed, but there's no listing for hotel. I can give you the page that I printed out. I don't know if that's helpful, but...
So you're correct. Is there a question about that?
Why wasn't there a calculation for hotel? Why are we only seeing office and apartments?
Good question. I'm going to ask Rebecca to, I think I've had a general answer, but if I'm wrong, please correct me. So part of the challenge of this project is that we, anytime you've got a multi-phase project, it's usually pretty easy to look at what phase one is going to be, and phase two, phase three, phase four are always more difficult. So when we prepare that chart, when elders prepare the chart, they looked at which project has the biggest fiscal impact. And if you compare a hotel with about 150 rooms versus an apartment with about 150 rooms, the apartment has a much larger economic impact. So the hotel, I'm presuming we probably ran a number for that, but it would probably be half of what the apartment number is. So we didn't bother to include that because the apartment was actually the worst-case scenario, or not worst-case, but like the biggest impact scenario.
Thank you.
Other council members? Questions?
Okay, at this point in time. All right, just a couple of clarifying things. You know, when we've used TIF to, when we determine that there's a sufficient public benefit to use TIF on a project, which is on a very limited basis, our rule of thumb has always been that we don't want that TIF district to have more than 10% of the value of the total construction cost of the project. And is this recommendation by staff within that parameter?
It certainly is. Yeah, the 10%, there's nothing hard and fast about it. It's just a good rule of thumb.
Just a bit of guideline for us, I know.
Yep. This project, what we're currently negotiating with the developer, and we're not quite finished with our negotiations yet, but right now we're looking at a TIF contribution would be about 5% of the total project cost. So we're looking at a TIF pledge of about $7.5 million on a project that's financed and costing about $160 million, so well within that 10%.
Okay, good. That was my recollection from our HRA meeting. I just wanted to confirm that. And then when we do have a proposal, whether, and I know we're going to do a sketch plan review tonight on a potential hotel project at 7200, but whether it's a hotel project or it's a multifamily dwelling that's proposed for that site at 7200, whatever's proposed needs to go through site plan approval yet. Is that correct?
That is exactly correct, yeah.
So, because we didn't approve anything with respect to phase two, which also reminds me with respect to phase one, when you and our financial advisors set up the TIF district, what portion of that proposed TIF investment was put into phase one that's been approved to go forward as opposed to phase two, which is more future, it's more in the future?
Sure. The way we currently have it structured, and again, it's not fully finalized and it's not contained in this document tonight, but when the first phase is complete, the developer is required to deliver all of those public areas, the sidewalks, the streets, the bike trail, the stormwater, the plazas, et cetera. That will be a cost of about $10 million. When they finish that first phase, we're aiming to pledge about, don't hold me to this, but about $6 million, 5.8, 6.2, somewhere in that range. But we would have all that upfront with an initial pledge. The balance of the funds to get up to the maximum, seven and a half that we're currently looking at, would only be delivered after that second phase is built. So it's one of those strategies where we try to maximize the public benefit early and deliver the public reimbursement as late in the game and as slowly as we have to.
All right. That was my recollection from the HRA meeting as well, that it was about, we were capturing most of the public benefit on phase one and getting about 80% of the reimbursement on phase one, and the rest of it was moving into phase two.
Correct.
Okay, good. That's all the questions I had. Anybody, that prompt anybody else to have a question? All right. This is a public hearing matter. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to testify regarding this matter?
Good evening. My name is Lori Severson and President of the Edina Chamber of Commerce. We're located at 3300 Edinburgh Way here in Edina, and with me tonight is Shelley Lowberg. She's our Vice President. And we just wanted to express our support of this TIF district. We have a group of members that review some of our economic development projects, and several of our board members, including myself, participated on the Southdale Area District Plan Committee that helped to put the guidelines together. And we also participated in discussions with the city regarding the revised and updated comprehensive plan. When we look at projects like this, we look for a project that has a win-win-win. We want the city to win, we want the residents to win, and we're also looking for a win for our developers. And in this particular project, we do see the win-win-win. And we also looked at the challenging nature of this property and that there was a significant portion that is designated to the community benefit. So we feel very strongly that TIF is warranted and is legitimate in this particular case. But Shelley, is there anything that you wanted to add to that?
Not a lot of additional comments, just that the public easements that have been designed have been thoughtful. They transitioned the area well on that west side that does go into the residential neighborhood. It does invite the public into the project and the area, and the area in general will create a really nice social atmosphere in that neighborhood.
Thank you.
We do have a letter that was submitted in your packet, and of course, we're always happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Severson. Thanks, Ms. Lowberg.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. How about let's go online and see if we have anybody that wishes to testify regarding this matter?
I do have several callers on the line. Callers, as a reminder, if you'd like to provide testimony, please press star one on your telephone keypad. That's all it took. I have callers. Operator, will you please unmute the line of our first caller? And caller, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Hello, this is Richard Stein again, 7016 Prista Boulevard. I'm calling to ask questions and to provide testimony on the TIF. If there's anything of greatest concern... If there's anything of greatest concern, it could be the stormwater as this, as the neighborhood that I live in has been preparing for improved stormwater management through the guise of the Lindmar Basin. I hope that the stormwater retention and the trees being put on the, funded on this property have the equivalent retention capability that the Lindmar Basin has, okay? And I think that is probably the most important, that is a very important aspect to consider as it prevents the property from being damaged if there's too much water because the stormwater can be successively managed. And that's, that's my first concern, first interest, and second and final is the implication of the TIF project, the TIF dollars, the implication to the city with regards to TIF, if the project prematurely ends, changes are, is incomplete and the TIF is then incompatible with the initial plans, okay? I bring this up only because this property does have a reputation of changes that were unsuccessful in the past, so it's easy to believe that it could be unsuccessful in the future if financial difficulties come about, for example. That's my, those are my concerns. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stein.
Thank you. Operator, will you please unmute the line of our next caller? And caller, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Lori Groats, 5513 Park Place. I've read the Ellers report, and I do not see $30 million in benefits to the public over the 25-year term of the TIF district. I believe the costs of constructing a plaza, sidewalks, and landscaping are part of the developer's cost of doing business. They are improvements to his property and do not provide a public benefit and shouldn't be paid for through TIF. Stormwater management, it's been stated many times that several properties drain to 7200. The current owner of the property was aware of the drainage issues prior to his purchase. According to the deeds at Hennepin County, his property is subject to a permanent drainage easement, which shows he must receive drainage from the surrounding properties. He paid accordingly for the site. 7200 sits lower than the surrounding properties. It receives the water. It doesn't direct it to those properties. The city doesn't pay to correct stormwater issues on residential properties, so why should TIF be paying to correct stormwater problems on a developer's property to increase its value? It shouldn't. It isn't a benefit to the public, but a financial benefit to the developer. The road on the west side of the properties brings their customers to their site to do business. It is not a public benefit, it's a benefit for the developer. I attended many of the meetings of the South Dale Design Group Task Force, which was facilitated by the consultant Mick Johnson. The South Dale design plan shows new streets being built every 200 feet on new developments in the South Dale area. I asked Mick how those streets would be funded, with TIF? He said no. They would be paid for by the developers in exchange for the city granting them variances and rezoning their properties to PUD. Ian Nemiroff, former Chair of the Planning Commission, was leading the task force at the time. Ask Ian, streets are being paid for via TIF, and it isn't financially viable going forward. Change the method of financing or change the South Dale design plan. I don't believe the cost to build a LEED-certified building and to have it certified should be paid by the public. That should be paid by the developer. It's an improvement for his project. If this TIF district is approved, I believe it will be the 12th district created since 2012. Most of the new developments in Edina are getting TIF. The Macy's property is next in line. We bought our house 44 years ago. I remember when developers built in Edina without asking for a handout. They just thought it was a good business decision. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Groats.
Oh, I wanted to say, my husband wants to speak next. I don't want to have to call back in, so would it be all right if he speaks now, please?
Sure, that's fine, Ms. Groats. Yeah, you can have your husband speak next, and we'll restart the clock.
Okay, my name is Jim Groats, 5513 Park Place. I'm asking for your no vote on creating this TIF. The properties asking for this TIF district do not need required but forecast. Look at the properties. They are blank cleared land. Think of it as a blank canvas. The developer will build on this property without TIF. TIF forces residential homeowners to pay for essential service infrastructure deficits created by the increased density of the TIF district. For details, please see the Ellers report on this TIF, which states this project will require 120 additional police calls each year for the hotel and 50 additional police calls each year for the office building. Then the next TIF project at the Macy's Home Store will require the same or more, and this goes on and on. There is no public benefit to burden individual homeowners with these essential service costs, meaning our taxes must go up to shoulder the burden of TIF. There are not enough public benefits. Only financial burdens homeowners are forced to pay. Please vote no. Thank you, HRA Commissioner Rissler, for your no vote at the HRA on this TIF, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Groats.
Okay, I do have some more callers, but no one is signally in their desire to speak. As a reminder, if you'd like to speak during this public hearing on the proposed TIF district, press star one on your telephone keypad. That's the asterisk symbol, then the number one, and that will get you in the queue to speak. If you press pound or the hashtag, that actually takes you out of the queue. So star one. I'm still not seeing anyone signaling to speak, so you may be safe in moving forward.
Thank you. All right, we've had public testimony from folks in our audience, and we've had public testimony from folks online. And the suggestion here from staff is to close the public hearing at noon on April 10th and continue the action on the item to the April 18 City Council meeting. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
A motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Agnew, to close the public hearing at noon, April 10th, and continue the action on this item to the April 18 City Council meeting. This matter is the Resolution 2023-25, which could potentially establish a tax increment financing district two at the 72nd and France, well, actually, they call it the 72nd and France two tax increment financing district. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the adoption of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? All right, we are on now to Director Teague in a matter that we discussed a couple of weeks ago, actually, maybe about a month ago. And before Mr. Lindgren leaves, I was thinking that if you're back here on April 10th, there may be some questions that were raised online that you could maybe possibly answer along with Ellers for us at that, at that meeting before there's a vote taken.
April 18th, I think.
Yep, 18th, excuse me. Yeah, the 18th, April 18th. Thank you. Director Teague.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As mentioned, this, this process for rezoning before the council was recommended by the city attorney a month or so ago when the subdivision was being considered. There was a couple of concerns that were raised at those meetings. One, in regard to future commercial use of the site, and second, concern about a code provision that requires commercial use on the first floor of a building within a PCD one district. So you're all familiar with the site. It's the old Burley Hair Salon site. Previous to the Hair Salon, it was a gas station. The site is zone PCD one planned commercial district, where multi-residential housing is a conditionally permitted use within that zoning district in addition to commercial uses as permitted use. The site is guided in the comprehensive plan as a neighborhood node, which also allows residential use. To provide a little more background, this site did receive a conditional use permit back in 2017, 2018 with the Edina Flats project. This site was to be a four-unit condominium, but that condo was never constructed, the rest of Edina Flats was constructed. But this site was not constructed per those original plans. So the applicant came back in last year in 2022 and asked for a revised site plan for the site, and there was a number of variances that went along with that condominium project. So the project before the council and ultimately approved was a site plan with variances. A conditional use permit was not needed at that time. A conditional use permit runs with the land, so conditional use permit was already granted back in, back in 2018. So again, that ran with the property, but they did need that new site plan approval because those previous site plans had all expired. So as I mentioned, there's also a code provision. In addition to multi-residential being a conditionally permitted use, there is confusingly a separate section of the code that states a PCD one building has to have commercial on the first level. So to remove any doubt about future commercial use on the site, the city attorney has advised the rezoning to PUD. So a PUD ordinance would be written specifically for this site, where the project that was approved last year would be the only possible development on the site unless the council were to amend the zoning ordinance to allow something else. So the request before you this evening is a rezoning to PUD. Primary issue is the proposal reasonable to justify the PUD rezoning for the site. Staff believes that it does. The rezoning would, would not allow that traditional PCD one commercial use, and it would rectify that confusion between the first floor commercial use. We believe that it meets the PUD standards. The approved townhome project would provide a more appropriate land use transition from the single-family homes to the north and to the east. Project will provide missing middle-type housing. This isn't an affordable housing project. Oftentimes, missing middle is associated with affordable housing. It's just a little higher density than, than single-family homes. There are a couple of specific provisions in the comprehensive plan, specifically the small area plan dealing with this, with this site. So the first is in regard to housing, that sites should be allowed to transition to housing from business use in response to changing market demands. And that's exactly what's happened here with the change from the commercial use to an all-housing project. And there's also a better transition from the single-family homes into the commercial area with this lower density development. The plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan. As I mentioned, the site is guided for neighborhood node. Described land uses within that node include residential. Primary uses include residential. The building density here is 15 units per acre. The comp plan range is between 12 and 30, so again, is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And again, the PUD rezoning ensures this specific project is the only development that happens on the site. So what's on the screen here before you is the simple ordinance amendment. It's just specific to this site. The approved plans from last September, again, are the approved plans that, that would be required to be constructed on the site. Multi-residential is the principal use, and the setbacks that were associated with the variance are called out as the specific site standards for the site. So again, this is the, the project that the applicant proposed last year. There's no changes in regard to their original approval project. We did not receive comments on Better Together. However, there was a concern raised at the public hearing at the Planning Commission in regard to the PUD and its process. There's no minimum lot size in a PUD zone in Edina. There was several comparisons from other cities that do have a minimum lot size requirement. Edina does not. Also, a process concern about a preliminary development application or process. With this, and in consultation with the city attorney, that preliminary development process has really already occurred with the approval of the site plan and the variances that happened last year. Question came up by a council member in regards to just how many public hearings this project has been through. After this evening, this will be the sixth public hearing on this project. There were two public hearings when the site plan was approved last year. There were two public hearings in regard to that subdivision request, and last week, the Planning Commission also held a public hearing. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission last week, and their recommendation is for denial. Some of their findings include that the already-approved project received a conditional use permit. Basically, the project is already approved, that with the existing zoning, PCD one allows multi-residential use as a conditional use, which they've already received. The project conforms to the small area, small area plan and comprehensive plan, and the concern about future commercial use, they felt confident that should any future commercial use be proposed on this site, they need to meet our commercial standards, likely a review process through Planning Commission and City Council. So they felt that the existing PCD one standards are adequate. So Planning Commission and staff are essentially on the same page here in that we want to see this project move forward. The difference is, Planning Commission believes that the existing zoning can support that, but with the recommendation of the city attorney to deal with those ambiguities that are out there, we are recommending the rezoning this evening. In addition to that recommendation for approval of the rezoning, we're asking that you close the public hearing this evening, not continue to the next meeting. Again, this was continued from a month ago. The public hearing has been open essentially for this project. So with that, staff is recommending the adoption of the Resolution 2023 approving the rezoning and grant that you grant first reading of the ordinance. The ordinance amendment would come back at your next meeting for second reading. And with that, I can stand for questions.
Questions for Director Teague. Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at some point in this process, I talked with a resident who was concerned about the survey on this property, and I think I talked with Mr. Kendall about this, and I don't know which of you is the best one to answer, but it's my understanding, we looked at it, and it appears to be a perfectly legal survey. Can you answer that question, though, because the resident was quite concerned?
Yes, certainly. So that is tied to the subdivision, which is on your agenda later this evening. But yes, the surveyor has signed the survey, the preliminary plat, signaling that everything on that survey is accurate. One of the conditions in the subdivision is that those future irons, the corner property markers, need to be set, so there's a development contract that will require that. So we have no reason to believe that the surveys are inaccurate.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. That's all.
Member Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What precedent, if any, are we setting if we were to approve the PUD?
This process is a little different in that it's somewhat after the fact, again, based on the recommendation of the city attorney. But I don't think we're, granted, this is a very small PUD. It's just one site. It's just one site. Every project is looked at on its own merits, whether it meets the PUD standards or not. So if this, if all the circumstances match up with this project, it could set a precedent in that regard. But there's usually different nuances for any type of future request that can give the council some flexibility, whether to approve or deny.
Karen. Do you want to ask Attorney Kendall his side?
Yeah.
On the precedent issue?
Member Pierce, counsel. In my opinion, this would not set a precedent. This is a, this, this issue is a rezoning issue, which is discretionary with the council. It's a quasi-legislative function. So the city and the council has discretion on whether to rezone. If someone made a similar rezoning request in the future, the council would have discretion to deny that if it cared to. So in my opinion, this would not be setting a precedent whereby, and also, I would add that I don't think that the current approvals are illegal or improper. I just think that there may be a slightly different way to approve this, arguably a better way. I don't think that the existing way is wrong or incorrect. And I don't think the city could or should take the position that if someone is in violation of their zoning or other approvals, that they can come in and just request a PUD zoning to remedy that. That would not be my recommendation by recommending it in this situation. And I guess I would just say that rezoning in this situation is optional with the council. I think it would probably be a better way to approach it, but it's not the only way. And if the council's not comfortable with that, this project can proceed with the previous approvals, and rezoning is not required. So I hope that answers your question.
Yes, and you may have answered part of my second question. So I, like probably all of my colleagues, watched the Planning Commission, and there was a very robust discussion about this. And it is their vote and discussion. So their vote coupled with the discussion, I thought, was pretty informative. And so my second question really is related to if the, the Planning Commission, believing that PCD one is currently all that is needed in this particular case. I wanted to, so my, my question was going to be to you, how do you kind of juxtapose recommending the PCD versus sticking with the PCD one, given that the project is already approved under that particular zone?
So the reason for the recommendation is just to eliminate any ambiguity because right now, there's one provision of the zoning ordinance that says that residential is permitted with the CUP, which is what the city has done. And I think that's legal and permissible. And then there's another provision, provision of the ordinance that says residential is not permitted on the first floor in the zoning district. So those two may or may not be in conflict. If the CUP permitting residential applies to everything, including the first floor, then there's no problem. If not, then there may be some conflict. I don't think that this is a major issue, but just to resolve any potential ambiguity or question about that, I recommended the rezoning. If the council's not comfortable with rezoning, council can just vote to proceed as it was previously approved.
Member Risher.
Could we, Director Teague, could we go back to the map? I think it was slide four that shows the, yeah, right there. Okay. And so the red is our planned commercial, and this is the Wooddale Valley View node. And my concern is if we rezone this to PUD and say it can never have commercial. And members of the Planning Commission were also concerned about this. And it was pointed out that, you know, I think it was Commissioner Padilla who noted, this is sort of the era where people are setting up businesses out of their homes. And the big concern was that there was no parking. But it's right next door to a daycare that true, you can't use their parking lot on the weekdays. And I have not talked to them, but that parking lot is totally empty on the weekends. So I just put that out there. Like, you know, now we're in the era of shared parking. Maybe that's a possibility. The other thing is that this is not, there are already existing totally residential developments in this PCD one View 44, as well as Edina Flats. And so if you just kind of imagine those spaces no longer being red, we're looking at a commercial node that kind of feels like it's disappearing a little bit. So that is, or actually, kind of a big bit. That's a concern that I have. The other concern I have speaks to process. And I did notice that if you look at Section 36-214, Council Hearings and Decisions, Zoning Approval, and I want to say before I read this, not recommending this, but it says, "In granting rezoning approval, the council may make modifications to the site plan and may impose conditions on its approval of the site plan." It's a whole nother ball of, well, what, a can of worms. All right. The develop, and I, but this is, we need to be aware of our code. And we really need to be looking at that as these projects come to us. We can talk about whether or not this reflects the comprehensive plan, rezoning to PUD. I don't think it does. And I think, you know, you can pull things from the comp plan that support your position or not. You know, I go back to essential basic safety. And I know I've discussed this earlier, so I'll make it short, but excessive driveways was identified in the small area plan as a problem. Okay? And these are known as conflict points, where pedestrians and bicyclists come together with traffic. And that's in our small area plan. It's also, if you read AARP's recommendations for design for elderly individuals, for older drivers and pedestrians, they talk about access management. They say exactly the same thing. They talk about conflict points and the need to limit the number of driveways. So, you know, I, I think we may be split on this, but it's really hard for me to think about this. I also brought up spot zoning when this came before. And I do still, it's a really teeny-tiny parcel, currently zoned PCD one, future land use is PCD one. That makes me really nervous. So just want to get all of that out there. Thank you.
Any comment, Director Teague?
No, I guess in regard to the spot zoning, we, staff doesn't believe it's spot zoning. Again, the uses are permitted within that PCD one zoning district. So in the, in rezoning it to PUD, the uses allowed are the same.
So the last time we had this conversation, about, about a month ago, the reason we ended up in the conversation was because the developer was here with an approved land use and needed to subdivide, requested to subdivide the four units so that we had individual townhouses that could be sold and resold. And then we got into this discussion about the existing zoning, and there was a concern expressed about the inconsistency in the code. And so the city attorney now, and that was the code that, that the developer followed. And then the city attorney said, well, we can fix that problem of a potential use of commercial, of a commercial business on the first floor of a townhouse by rezoning it to PUD 25. And I'm assuming, and I, maybe you said this in your presentation or said it last time, is the rezoning to PUD, as embodied in PUD 25 district, consistent with the comprehensive plan? In your opinion?
Yes, yes. Yes, I would believe that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The uses and the density are allowed in the comprehensive plan.
Can you restate that again? The...
The, the uses of...
If we rezoned it to PCD one, or rezoned it under the, under the ordinance 202305, which establishes PUD District 25, is that consistent? Is that establishment of that ordinance and the creation of that PUD district consistent with the comprehensive plan? And your answer is yes?
Yes.
Okay. Because this helps me in deciding whether we should, I mean, in my opinion, the developer just needs to have us address that action that's in the next section of the agenda, and that is, are we going to allow the subdivision or not? But I think to address the, the city attorney's concerns about the, at least the theoretical use of a first floor of a townhouse for commercial business purposes, why not get rid of that as a possibility? And fix that inconsistency in the code after the fact? So I think I'd tend to support what the city attorney is recommending and what you're recommending, despite what the Planning Commission was thinking, which was a fair way to look at it, too, I think, is that, you know, they were saying, well, the developer doesn't need to do anything else. Tell them to go ahead and, and then deal with the subdivision. So I think I tend to support this. So anyway, any other comments? Should, should we, is there a motion to? Yeah, we got it, we got it. It's a public hearing matter, so let's, let's hear from...
The applicant is here to speak as well.
Oh, sorry, Member Agnew, sorry.
I was just going to offer a, a comment. In kind of watching the Planning Commission meeting, I was really swayed by that. I, I feel like, why introduce a change if it's not necessarily needed? If we already have something that's approved and that we can move forward with? And it just seems inconsistent in the process, kind of in the, the order that we're going about it, to do this after we already had an approved plan for the site? So I am not, on the, the surface, supportive of this. But again, I can be kind of still taking in information.
Okay, thanks for that. And then this is a public hearing matter. Is there anyone who wishes to testify? I see the, the developer is in the, in the back of the council chambers with her attorney. And I think they want to do, make a brief presentation. And this is Rebecca Remick from City Homes and then Sarah Bennett, I assume, from Frederickson &amp; Byron. Ms. Remick, identify yourself, please, and your business address.
I am Rebecca Remick, owner of City Homes. I live at 5027 Wooddale Lane in Edina. The City Homes office is, operates out of 3918 Sunnyside Road in Edina since 2016. And we will be relocating to the 6800 Office Center near South Dell later this month. I had a conversation with someone yesterday, and they said, "Thank you for investing in our city." That statement really hit home to me, and I appreciated the comment. I live in Edina, contribute to Edina businesses, both big and small, and I raise my three children in this city. When I was making the decision where, about where to locate the next City Homes office, I chose to move within Edina. Over the last 10 years, City Homes has continued to make improvements to neighborhoods all over the city and make many Edina residents' dreams come to life, whether they're first, first-time homebuyers, residents looking to build a new home for their growing family, and for the empty nester looking to enjoy a scaled-down lifestyle as they enter into a new stage of life. I also have built for many long-term Edina residents looking to renovate or build a home that will enable them to safely age in place and remain in close proximity to their family and friends and remain in the city where they have spent the majority of their lives. I believe in this city. I very much appreciated that the last City Council believed in me with this row home project. I worked so hard with so many different people to get this site and plan to a point that the city could stand behind, and I could justify dedicating the resources from City Homes needed to make this project a reality. Thank you for all who helped me, and again, thank you for your approval last September. After the project was approved, the City Homes team spent a lot of time, energy, and money to get the approved plans to a point where the lot lines could specifically be defined for the survey. We did the work, we spent the money, and built on paper exactly what was approved by the City Council. I then came back before the Planning Commission, who recommended approval of the subdivision. I have done everything I have been asked to do, and I have done exactly what I agreed to do on this project because I want this project to succeed and because I believe it will have a positive impact in the neighborhood and the community. I have not changed one thing in the development plans or asked for anything to be changed, except for what has been recently asked by the city with respect to the rezoning. Please take note that the rezoning of the property is conditioned upon the development of the parcel with the plans that were approved in September of 2022. Nothing has changed from the plan perspective for what has already been approved. I am asking for you to approve the application for rezoning this parcel and to approve the application for the subdivision of this approved project as it was intended from the beginning and when it was voted on and approved back in September. My business and all of the people that I support with my business are counting on this project. I put into my work, I put this into my workload for the year because it was approved. I'm asking you, for you to continue to stand behind me as I stand here doing exactly what you asked me to do.
Thank you, Ms. Remick.
Hi there, good evening. My name's Sarah Bennett. I'm an attorney with law firm of Frederickson &amp; Byron. I represent City Homes. And Rebecca asked me to be here tonight to speak on this rezoning application, as I have been the attorney for Edina Flats and now with the Rowett Valley View Townhome Project. So I'm very familiar with the area. I'm familiar with the development. And I'm familiar with what is being asked tonight because I've been working with Mr. Kendall, the city attorney, on tonight's application. So for the public hearing, we're here just on the issue of the rezone. And I think it's been made pretty clear in front of council and by Director Teague tonight that we are here for the rezone for the sole purpose of resolving an ambiguity, right? So this, this parcel has had site plan approval with Edina Flats. With Edina Flats, it was included as additional real estate that could be added to the condominium community should the developer choose to do so with the Edina Flats project. It was not added to that community, but was instead transferred to City Homes to develop the Rowett Valley View Townhome concept. It got site plan approval again in 2022. We have an approved project to build for townhomes. So Ms. Remick comes in to, so I'll back up a moment. With any developer, in my experience, it takes time to understand how you're going to develop this. Are we going to do a CIC? Are we doing condos? Are we doing townhomes? The developer decided here that townhomes, so, so four separate lots was the way to go. That requires subdivision approval, which required her to have to come back after site plan approval. I think we all know that development isn't always easy and smooth, right? Case in point. And so she was going to come back for subdivision approval, went through the process, as we heard tonight, numerous public hearings in that regard, to have this zoning ordinance raised about the, the concern with the dwelling on the first level in a PCD one or a PCD two district. Rather than have my client, City Homes, come in front of the council when this ambiguity had been raised, we worked and we cooperated with the city in, in following the recommendation, right? To rezone the property from PCD one, which was what was approved for the Edina Flats development, to work on the rezone to a PUD that's solely for a strictly residential purpose, to resolve the ambiguity between a vested right of a conditional use permit, which is what my client has. My client has site plan approval, but to resolve this, this little ambiguity would be to rezone to a PUD for residential district. Okay? So the public hearing doesn't really have to do, you know, with the subdivision. That comes later. But the two are interrelated because the rezone came about with, came about with the subdivision. And so we, we talked, Rebecca and I talked, and, and her, and she's told you this tonight. She has been before Planning Commission. She's been before councils. She wants this project to work. She wants to cooperate with the city. She's a resident of the city. Her business is in the city. And so in spirit of cooperation, she is in support of this application to rezone if it resolves the ambiguity that people had raised in the community. There was a concerned group of residents about the ability to operate a commercial use out of a residential townhome. And when I say "commercial use," I'm not talking about someone working from home. I mean, we're all working from home a lot these days after the pandemic. We're talking about a commercial purpose. And so to resolve that ambiguity, that's why we're here. I also want to point out two other things that I think... I also want to point out two other things that I think are important to note. In working with Edina Flats and now with working at Row at Valley View Town Homes, I am the attorney that drafts the Articles of Organization, of Incorporation Bylaws and Declaration. I've provided a proposed draft of the declaration to the city attorney. Of course, it's just a draft, it hasn't been finalized. But if you look through that, if council had an opportunity to see that, I'm not quite sure, you'd see, though, that the declaration, which is recorded against the property, right? It's binding against the property, you'd find it in a title commitment, and you'd find it in a title report. It restricts owner's use, it, it restricts it to a residential use. Certainly, a declaration can be amended by owners of the townhome community with supermajority approval. But again, this goes to, my client's intended purpose was never to have a commercial building. It was always to be residential, and the declaration shows that. But again, in spirit of cooperation, we're here with the city's recommendation. The other thing I want to point out, just in, in wrapping up on the legal side of things, and then I want to point out a couple of practical side of things, is that there was a concern about the survey. I understand that. I've been working with City Homes and looking at their preliminary plat. Again, any plat is preliminary until it's approved by the county as well. The county surveyor has to be involved. There was a concerned resident who brought up some case law. I researched that case law, I worked with our surveyor, I wrote a letter. I believe that the preliminary plat does comply with legal requirements, platting requirements, and Minnesota case law. So to the extent that any of those, you know, concerns are still out there, I'd be happy to talk about it. Not at this moment, but it, I've researched, I feel good about it. From a practical standpoint of view, and then I'll, then I'll wrap it up, is that this is a vacant parcel of land. So right now, it's sitting there, it's doing nothing. Let's, let's help our business owner, let's help my client, City Homes, create what was intended. Right now, it's just sitting there, and I think Director Teague has said this before, and I absolutely agree, is because we have site plan approval for this parcel, someone would have to come along and get a different site plan approved, would they have to come back to Planning Commission, they'd have to come back to City Council? I don't think my client, as the fee owner of the property, has any intention of doing that. So let's move forward with what was intended, rather, in this great district, right? That's revitalized with Edina Flats, with the commercial space, with the apartment, with New Horizons. Let's, 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 let's finish what was intended. And then the last point I would have is just that I think that this does provide, provide in this area with a lot of single-family dwellings, it does provide that missing middle that I know Rebecca has spoken to before. I think it's important to look at the housing that it does provide, that it provides an opportunity for people to live in this neighborhood, and I do think it provides that transition. So I'd ask the council to strongly consider this application for rezoning, again, in the spirit of this is what was recommended to us, to my client, is a way to get this done. I'll note that the Planning Commission recommended to deny this. I watched the Planning Commission meeting. I understood where they were coming from because their position is that my client already has vested rights and the conditional use permit and can go ahead and build, so why would we rezone? But if we're, if we're looking, if this is an opportunity to clean up tension between a vested CUP right and an outstanding zoning ordinance, and we can do that, let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Questions from council for the developer? Okay. This is a public hearing matter. We've heard from the developer. And let's see if anybody else in the chambers wishes to testify regarding this
Can I use the table? Is the microphone still there?
Yes.
Okay. Janie Weston, 6136 Brookview Avenue. This request to rezone to a planned PUD, or Planned Unit Development, PUD is completely inappropriate and an outright misuse of how a PUD is to be used. In a document written by Community Resource Planning for the state of Minnesota in 2000, updated in 2008, titled "From Policy to Reality: Model Ordinances for Sustainable Development, Planned Unit Development Ordinance," on page four, under limitations of PUDs, line six reads, "The PUD must not become a way to simply circumvent zoning and subdivision standards." I did a lot of research on PUD ordinances and procedures used by a number of different cities, Richfield, Golden Valley, Anoka, Roseville, Brooklyn Park, Hopkins, and Minnetonka. In all of these cities, their codes clearly and unambiguously state that rezoning to PUD is a first step in the process, or is a part of the process in combination with planning a development from the very beginning. This is not the beginning. The idea of rezoning 4404 Valley View to PUD six-plus months after a project has been approved is beyond belief in my book. Here, I have an overview of PUD process for all these other cities. People can read that. Many of these cities have a minimum number of acres required for PUD of two to 10 acres. In the state of Minnesota document, it states minimum size no less than 10 acres. PUD is for a larger property, such as 7200 France. 4404 Valley View is 0.27 acres, barely over one-fourth of an acre. That is not okay. The price point is being advertised on creative homes and Realtor websites as starting at $1.395 million. This is not by any stretch of my imagination and most normal people as a middle price point. That's what it insinuates in the staff report. Last month, well, February, in Edina, the median home price was $650,000, less than half. So in the staff report, they cite PUD rezoning, Chapter 36 of the Edina Code, Regulations for PUD and Under Purpose and Intent. It says, "A PUD is not to include most or all of the following." Let me put this out there. They have points listed as A through I, so that's nine different points. I find that five of the nine points don't fit the purpose and intent of a PUD. I have my comments written as such. Finally, I have an important question and a point to make. The View 44 Apartments and the Edina Flats condos, those units are all zoned, that land is zoned PCD1. There are residences that live on the first, people live on the first floor.
Ms. Weston, I need to have you wrap up. I've let you drift over quite a bit.
All right. So why, why are they not rezoned to something more appropriate than a PCD1? Where commercial use is a possibility of being done?
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Susan Lee, 6708 Point Drive. All right, I, just listening tonight, this isn't about, from a residential, residence point of view, about cleaning up tension or resolving a little ambiguity. It is exactly the wrong zoning classification. It's about the PUD, and I think the Planning Commission picked up on it. The council has a duty to be well-versed on the basic zoning principles and classifications that all cities use. As we learned in architecture school, PUD stood for Planned Urban Development, hence morphing into Planned Unit Development, and was never intended for a single residential lot. I want to say that again. PUD was never meant for a single residential lot. Rather, it was meant to zone large parcels, typically undeveloped farmland or areas of the urban core undergoing development first in the 1920s. Many cities have requirements of no less than 50 acres for a PUD zoning, with the smallest that I've found recently to be a minimum of two acres. Think about why that is. In order to include mixed uses within a single development, there needs to be enough land that can accommodate the different uses that a PUD implies: roads, sidewalks, open space, retail, commercial, and housing. Eight years ago, as the Chair of the Wooddale Valley View Small Area Plan, this particular parcel in question was addressed extensively by our team in terms of how the building should be designed, the proper orientation, even a suggested rendering was provided. This parcel was perhaps the most extensively detailed guidance ever provided to any city in terms of addressing possible future development. Why? Because it is the eight-way parcel to this node. It is mind-boggling, to say the least, that both the Planning Commission and council did not simply rely on the wonderful tool it had when trying to decide whether to grant exception after exception for this parcel. Be that as it may, the latest twist by the builder to rezone the parcel as PUD from its current PCD1 confers absolutely no benefits to the city of Edina or its residents. PCD1 was a comp plan amendment by this council under the justification that it permits the greatest flexibility for future, future development, and it still makes sense. Our future does not end as of today, or even the next 20, 30, 40 years. There is going to be a future use on that site. And housing is permitted under PCD1. This request has no merit. In fact, it will hold much detriment to the specific previous planning done by your constituents and contained in the Small Area Plan. One final comment, the staff findings provided are often so vague and misrepresented. Please do not take for granted the finding that this proposal meets the city's criteria for PUD rezoning in Chapter 6. Please, please, read the code yourself and decide if you agree. And one outright error, the project definitely does not provide missing middle housing or a graceful transition to the single-family neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Patrick McGlynn. I led 4622 Casco Avenue. I'm intimately familiar with this site and with this project. I disagree with the last two people that spoke. I think that finding a solution to circumvent a problem that seems to be concern about having commercial use on the first floor, this seems like a reasonable request to try to limit that concern. I think this is a wonderful project. If I had 25 of these to sell, I think I could sell them all. There's a lot of people in this community in their mid-70s that are living in their large homes that are not ready to leave the city, but they don't have any options. I feel like this project fills that gap massively. People want to stay in this community, they love this community. I think this project does a wonderful job of doing that. I think you have an opportunity here to, to just get this project moved along, and let's see, let's see it come to life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGlynn. Anyone else? All right, let's turn to anybody that might be with us online.
I have several people in the queue right now. Operator, will you please unmute the line of our first caller? And caller, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, hi. My name is Maggie Augustin Bookie. I live at 5845 Ashcroft Avenue. I just want to let my feelings be known about this project. My family has been in Edina family for all of our life, and we have a very, very long history with the city of Edina. And I'm actually disappointed to see that this property is not being developed. I drive by the site daily, and it is actually very frustrating for me to continue to see the underdeveloped project that has been approved already. I was in support of this project, and I was happy when it was approved, and I was relieved when it was finally something that was going to be finalized, and I thought it was going to be a great addition to the neighborhood. I am asking the city council to please make this happen and get construction underway so it can finally be finished, as it has already been approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bookie.
Operator, will you please unmute the line of our next caller? And caller, as a reminder, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record. Go ahead, caller.
Hi, this is Britta Hovey. I reside at 5617 Zenas Avenue South, and I'm calling today, in particular, on behalf of residents, from the standpoint and the perspective of trying to have more development, move along faster within our community for those in our particular age category. I work in healthcare, we're getting into the space of housing, and I have a father who's at Aurora in France, and a mother who has to move into a home. I think that we need to push the council to do more, to move these projects along that actually do meet, you know, the need of the community. We have plenty of people who can fill this space or these units, and I think as we see the age population increase, we're going to need more, and I don't think we've taken into consideration in the planning just what the age wave, just what the baby boomers are going to, you know, do to our communities. I'm younger, I'm caring for older parents, and I really want to stress that I think when these opportunities come up, I'd like the council to move on it as quickly as possible. And that was just the point I wanted to make today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I believe we have one more caller. Caller, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Krista Patrick, and I live at 620 Alcon. Can you all hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes, go ahead.
Would you repeat your address again for me?
Okay, awesome. Yeah, 620 Alcon. So I live quite literally right down the street from this property, and I have to say, I'm really surprised and a little bit disappointed that nothing is being done on this site yet. I was encouraged by the approval last September, and then nothing happened. And then from there, I gave City Homes a call. I had a good conversation with them, they're ready to build, and so I just wonder, you know, what are we waiting on? Someone just earlier in this call, in this meeting, said something about commercial zoning and it not being approved down in the future. Thank goodness, right? I don't understand why that's a concern, driveways compared to cars coming in and out. And I'll just be honest, as a homeowner, that concern doesn't make any sense to me. I would need someone to explain that to me. Shifting gears to last summer, there was a lot of construction right there on Valley View, and I was hoping it could be finished in the same season, but the area still isn't finished. My neighborhood wants this property built and finished. Nobody wants to see that overgrown area come mid-July again. So glad to hear the survey is in a good place and approved. That's awesome, and that the zoning is a good, is in a good spot, too, right? And that the PUD is practically irrelevant. And so I'm just hoping that you all vote for the subdivision as it was intended, when it was approved, and with the builders, City Homes, get started on that project. I'm confused why we're all still talking about this, to be honest, and that's it.
All right, thanks for the call.
And I have one more caller in the queue. Caller, please begin by stating your full name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Jim Groats, 5513 Park Place. I was, I attended some of the Wooddale Valley View Small Area Plan events. Assistant City Manager Karen Kirk was a staff person, and there was five consulting teams hired for the Small Area Plan, yes, five. My group- My group leader was Susan Lee from the Planning Commission, who we just heard from a couple of callers ago. Some of my comments I'm not going to state because they've been covered, but one of the big concerns I have here is I actually did look at the documents, and it appears to me that the flats had a conditional use permit in it to cover this item. And one of the issues and questions I have, is the conditional use permit, which was, had been issued as part of the flats, which is over two years now, is that expired? And is this the whole reason we're doing this? Is that the builder, if they must follow the code where they have to, they can't reapply after a year? Is this, is this thing expired? Perhaps somebody could answer that question while I'm on the line.
All right. It won't be answered while you're on the line, Mr. Groats, but it will be answered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not believe I have any more callers at this time.
All right. Thank you. Staff suggesting that we deal with this matter this evening, so let's do this. Let's address the issue of whether to close the public hearing. Is there a motion to close the public hearing in this matter?
Still moved.
Second.
There are motion and a second to close the public hearing in this matter. A motion made by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce. Any further discussion on that issue of closing the public hearing? All right, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Let's move now to this discussion that we're going to have around this matter with respect to whether to approve the adoption of Resolution 2023-26 and ordinance change 2023-05. I think the conversations and the comments from some of the testifiers led us clearly to turn to our city attorney, Mr. Kendall, and ask him about whether PUD is the proper vehicle to be using here as we try to clear up this ambiguity in the code, because there were some questions about whether PUD was the wrong tool for cleaning up, or whether it was the correct tool or the wrong tool for cleaning up this ambiguity.
Mr. Mayor, I think some of the comments had to do with area size, site size. A lot of them referred to the idea that PUD is designed to be used on larger sites. That may be generally true in the state standards, but Edina in particular has no minimum site size, so PUD is a viable option on this site. As for whether it's right or wrong, it's, it's the way, the best way I see to clear up this ambiguity. Now, there's been a lot of comments tonight about, is that even a concern anymore? I mean, I don't know if it is. There was a lot of concern raised a month ago about this might be some kind of attempt to have this approved as a residential project now, but then somehow start using it as a commercial project in the future. I don't think, that's not my understanding of the situation. I've looked at the declaration. It'll be recorded on the title to the property, and it requires the property to be used for residential purposes. So I think this rezoning is only necessary if you believe that that's a legitimate concern, that someone might try in the future to somehow redesign this into a commercial use that the city doesn't want to see there. If that's no longer a concern, this P, this rezoning becomes less urgent, but it still would clear up that ambiguity within the city zoning ordinance. So that was the reason for my recommendation. You know, I don't think that there's necessarily a perfect solution to this issue, but this is the best solution that I can recommend. If the council disagrees, the council can certainly approve or move forward with the previously granted approvals, and that, the project will still proceed on that basis.
All right. The other question that Janie Weston raised was from some of her research was the whether, whether or not the use of PUD here was a way to circumvent the existing zoning. What are your thoughts on that?
I don't believe it does circumvent the existing zoning. The existing zoning does allow for multifamily residential, and this would be basically approval of a PUD that would allow only multifamily residential, which would be a permitted use under the current zoning or under the new zoning. So I don't think it's in any way circumventing the requirements of the current zoning. The current zoning allows multifamily, and the PUD would allow multifamily.
All right. And then, Mr. Groats raised the issue whether or not the CUP had expired. Detective Teague?
Yeah, the conditional use permit runs with the land. What had expired was the site plan approval from the Edina flats and those variances associated with this lot. So the site plan approval that they received last year replaced those Edina flats approvals.
All right. And one of the other concerns from Ms. Lee was that this was an effort by the developer to rezone the property. I don't see that at all. I mean, I see this as an effort by the city to clear up an ambiguity in its code, and Ms. Remick and City Homes is a, is a good neighbor, so to speak, and a participatory, participatory traveler on that exercise. Is that the way you see it?
I would agree, yes.
I mean, we're trying to clear up something that we've created ourselves, and she's saying, okay, I'll, I'll help in that effort. All right. Other, I think other council members may have caught some other things. Member Pierce?
Yep, I just had one question. You covered a couple of things that I was going to comment on. So the last question I have, we keep, we're saying that we're trying to clarify an ambiguity in the code. The resolution reads as though what we're doing is recommending that we change, that we rezone this property from one code to another code. Is that generally correct?
Yes. From one zoning designation to another zoning designation.
That exists today, right? Both the PCD, PUD 25 is in the code today.
No, it's going to be created. We would be creating it and approving it to go into the code.
So my point there is if there's ambiguity in the general code, what's the process for fixing that? Like, it doesn't feel like we would be, we should be trying to fix that with a project sitting before us. Like, that work should go, I think, to the Planning Commission to have the conversation to say, oh, you know what? We need to address this ambiguity in our code by coming up with a construct to address that.
So, Member Pierce, I agree with that completely. I think the proper approach would be some kind of text amendment to Section 36, Dex 618, Subdivision 18A, which is the provision that talks about first-floor commercial. So the long-term fix would be to revise the zoning ordinance, do a text amendment, so this will never happen again.
And then further to that, then in the meantime, we have this concern that was, that was raised by the community. Then we have other vehicles, which we've, we've chosen one, to address the current use of this developer to ensure that there's no commercial use for that, that development. And that was, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, the attorney that spoke.
Bennett. Sarah Bennett.
Sarah Bennett. Ms. Bennett spoke about earlier. Is that?
Yes. If I understand your question, I, I agree.
Yeah. So we got a problem we need to fix in the code. There's a process that we should follow to do that. In the interim, we have a way to address this specific concern as well. Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
And I'll just say one more time, I think either approach would be viable.
Yep.
You could do nothing and then amend the code later, or you could rezone this to PUD and then amend the code later. Either one would be okay. The rezoning is a little bit clearer, in my opinion.
Somebody have, any mic? Go ahead.
But, so just the last sentence you made, a rezoning could be the way to do that. But we're, but wouldn't we be rezoning to a, to a PUD 25 which doesn't exist?
Well, so the PUD would adopt this particular site plan, so that would make it permissible.
Right, but I think my statement's true, right? It doesn't exist today. As we sit here today, it doesn't exist.
Correct. It does not exist unless you approve the rezoning.
Right, okay.
And that's a new proposed ordinance that creates that.
Right. I'm just talking about a process here. That's why I'm asking the questions in that, that manner. It's different if we were saying, hey, you know, PCD, or I keep saying it wrong, you know, this zone exists, we, it's, needs to be, this property needs to be rezoned, and there's a zone in the code that can be used. We choose that one because of the, we need to rezone this property for a certain use. Like, that, to me, would, would make sense, but this doesn't exist today, and so we would create it, and then we would apply it.
Well, the way that Edina does PUD zoning is, Edina adopts a separate ordinance for each PUD that it adopts. So each PUD that you create is a new ordinance. So there's nothing unusual about this particular PUD because it's the same process that's utilized in every PUD in Edina. So it's, that part is not unique to this situation.
Well, that can't be true. Can that be true? This is the first time we've done this. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think Manager Schaefer wanted to... Assistant Manager Schaefer.
I was just wondering if I, sorry, I was just wondering if I could maybe clarify or ask the question in a little bit different way, because I think if the question is, or the solution, the problem we're trying to solve is perceived or actual ambiguity in the code. The solution, the best, technical, easiest, clearest, understood by anybody reading the code, by, recommended by the attorney, is to rezone. So then, the, the process would be, the normal process would be to bring that to council for approval. What is different in this situation is that it is happening at the same time that we're considering something under review. So maybe the, a different question for Attorney Kendall might be, what is the difference or what potential impact would there be if we don't consider the zoning change at this time, but consider it for approval at a later time? And then that would follow a more typical process. Would that have any real impact on the rest of the decisions to be made tonight? Does that help get a little bit more at that?
So, yeah, I, I don't think that there is any major drawback to not approving the rezoning tonight, except for, for this particular project, I guess this ambiguity would persist until either the code gets changed or the PUD gets approved. That would be the only drawback.
Member Risher.
We are creating a very different residential zone by doing this, and I think the question to be asked is, why can't we simply rezone to one of our existing residential zones? And we can't, because this project started out in the PCD-1 zone, which allowed it to have these lot size, you know, the idea is it can have these tiny little lots because it started in PCD-1. There were no lot, minimum lot sizes. And then we're creating, if we do do a PUD, we're creating a residential zoning that allows for those lots to be created that have no minimum. And that's, in my mind, a really big deal.
Anybody have a preference on which way to go? I've become a little bit more agnostic about this, frankly, but it, it seems to me that either pathway is one that we could follow based on the city attorney's position.
Yeah.
And I take it as a position, and continues to be, that the cleanest way to do it is to rezone it and clear up that ambiguity for this particular piece of property, and then go to the code and have the Planning Commission fix the code problem at a subsequent time.
That is my recommendation.
Member Jackson?
Well, you stated my position. That's where I'm at. Fix it up tonight.
I bet that was coming in the form of a motion.
And I will make that motion. I move that we pass, and I don't have a resolution number.
Here you go.
Resolution number 2023, approving the requested rezoning. Is it, are there two?
Yeah, 2023-26 would be the resolution that would be approved, and then grant first reading to ordinance 2023-05, which creates that PCD, PUD 25 district.
Exactly. That's the motion I'm making.
Approving the requested rezoning would be the rest of the motion.
Yes.
And Member Jackson makes that motion. Is there a second? I'll second it for discussion. All right, let's, let's talk it over. It seems like people want to go the alternative route, which was the Planning Commission route. Any strong sense of that?
I guess I, I guess I would maybe phrase that to say not the alternative route, but the standard route. And I don't, I don't think, I don't think we need to do it. And so that's, I guess that's what I'm struggling with. And it's, I mean, it's tough, but that's kind of how I am viewing it, that we don't need to do it for this, for this property.
Go ahead. I forgot to ask a question that I think would help you on this issue, whether or not we need to do it. Now, Attorney Bennett said that in the declaration that she's preparing for this project, she's going to have a provision there that says that no commercial use is going to be involved. But that hasn't been recorded yet because this project isn't approved in its final stage, is it? Want to comment on that?
Could I get up?
Yeah, maybe the city attorney knows what the status is on that.
Yeah, no, that's not the process. I mean, my client has... It's an approved project.
Yeah.
And I think you said it the best way, Mr. Mayor. She's a willing participant along the way for this rezone application. Whether, I mean, we're, we are still in favor of the rezone, but this project just needs to get done. Subdivision needs to happen. Once the subdivision is approved, we can get our preliminary plat turned into a final plat, approved at the county, and then the declaration is recorded against the property. And the units, as we all know, are being marketed as residential. And so the declaration is drafted, you would see, and Mr. Kendall, the city attorney, has a draft. It's not finalized. I don't anticipate major changes to be made from that, but it provides that it's a residential use. So again, like, this project needs to move forward. This has been too long.
Yeah, we're with you.
Okay.
We're getting there. The thing I was trying to solve, I think, is the issue of, the declaration deals with the issue that Member Pierce was concerned about, but the declaration isn't effective until it's recorded, and so we got a gap. So if you want to fix the gap problem, you do the rezoning. That's the way you fix the gap, and then it just becomes a belt and suspenders kind of thing.
If you want to fix the gap with this project, then yes. If you want to approve the, the project's already approved and approve the subdivision so the project can move forward, and we now realize we have an ambiguity in the code, we could still do the work to address the ambiguity in the code. Like, why would we not do that?
This motion is to address the ambiguity in the code.
No, the, well, this motion, yes, is to address ambiguity in the code now.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
Which, right now, I'm not in favor of. And so what I'm asking is, is there a challenge in denying this? The project can move forward. We still have to have the conversation about subdivision, that, you know, the project's approved, we approve the subdivision, we have the declaration that will be attached to the property, and then if we still think we have an ambiguity issue, then we can still address that? Like, what am I missing? Like, that seems so logical to me, but am I missing something? But am I missing something?
It is one logical pathway. Director T, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I will work with the planning commission to come up with some ordinance language that addresses that ambiguity. I will definitely work on that. I'm hearing that message from the council so we can, we can start that process.
The only issue I was trying to address is because she's not going to record that declaration. Let's say it's a month, two months. He's suggesting that in the gap period. So there's nothing that controls whether or not there could be a first floor commercial use on that property in that gap. So somebody could still put one in there, arguably, under that ambiguity in the code that we're trying to clean up. So.
Mayor, I just want to say, I, I really don't believe that this developer is putting forth this residential project, put all this time and money into it. They're going to record a declaration that will require it to be a residential project.
Yeah, me either.
And then they will try in the interim, in that short period of time, to convert it into commercial.
No, I agree with you.
So if you, if you just want to take it on faith that that's not a danger, this rezoning becomes less critical. It's still, it does solve this problem for this development right now, which would be maybe the ideal solution. But it may not be critical to do that. And if you don't feel the need to do that, you can address the long-term problem at a later date.
Yeah. Let me make it clear. I do not think this developer wants to put in commercial use on the first floor. I think she wants to build four beautiful townhouses. And we're going to deal with whether or not they can be subdivided in the next part of the agenda. You want to withdraw your motion?
I can withdraw my motion.
All right, I'll withdraw the second.
I just want to say, this is a lot of hoops to run through and a lot of stress for a lot of people.
Yep, and a lot of cost.
And a lot of cost. And I hope we don't do this again.
And I want to thank Ms. Remick for being, and City Homes, for being so cooperative with the city. And the developer has done everything according to the book, if you will. Everything that we've been asked, you've been asked to do, you've done. The city has gone through their processes. It's an approved project, as Member Pierce points out. So the next motion, I think, is, what, to deny the resolution? You got to, you got to, yeah. Deny, deny resolution 2023-26 and ordinance 2023-05. Can we handle that in a single motion?
I think you can, yes.
Yep. Is that, is that your motion, Member Pierce?
I'm so moved.
I second.
All right. Member Pierce moves, and Member Agnew seconds that we deny resolution 2023-26 and the proposed ordinance 2023-05. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Okay. Yeah, thanks again. All right, Ms. Bodicker, you've got the last public hearing matter here. Resolution 2023-20, which seeks a certificate of appropriateness. It's on appeal, actually, on 4630 Drexel Avenue.
Okay. What? Is this on? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. 4630 Drexel is located within the Country Club District on the northwest corner of Drexel and Country Club Road. The home was built in 1924 and is classified as a Mediterranean style. A certificate of appropriateness for an addition and remodel project was approved by the HPC in September of 2020. A building permit was then issued for the property in July of 2021. During construction, the contractor found that the existing chimney structure that was posed to be saved was not stable and contacted city staff. The building official and planning staff visited the site, and the building official deemed that the existing chimney structure was unsafe and it needed to be removed. In June of 2022, the HPC reviewed a COA amendment for a change in the approved roofing materials and the construction of a new chimney structure. The HPC at that point denied the request for the change in roofing materials and approved the reconstruction of the chimney without the addition of an exterior gas fireplace insert. The approved chimney was to be finished in stucco and a stone fireplace surround per the schematic that was submitted by the applicant. So it was intended to match the original structure. Staff inspected the site at the end of 2022 when a final inspection was requested by the permit holder, and staff had received complaints of the project not being completed. At that point in time, staff addressed the outstanding items with the permit holder. One of those outstanding items was the fireplace stone detailing. At that point in time, staff discussed the options of either requesting an amendment to the existing COA, to approve the chimney without the stone, or to install the stone detailing per the approved schematic and the existing COA. The property owner and the applicant chose to move forward in seeking an amended COA. The request to the HPC on January 9th was an amendment approving the changes to the rebuilt fireplace, approving the fireplace without the stone detailing as it's currently built today. After staff and the applicant presented their requests, the HPC discussed the submittal. And in reviewing the COA and COA amendments, the plan of treatment refers to the Secretary of the Interior Standards of Rehabilitation. The standards of rehabilitation that were reviewed at that point in time were that distinctive features that characterize a historic property shall be preserved. Whether, or where the severity of deterioration requires replacement of a distinctive feature, the new feature shall match the old in design and other visual qualities. And that new additions or related new construction should be undertaken in such a manner that in the future, if it has to be removed, the form and the integrity of the structure would be unimpaired. Ultimately, the HPC denied the applicant's request. The HPC felt that because of the, because the detailing of the fireplace was discussed with the approval of the plans to rebuild the chimney, it was an element that should remain. They also felt that the detailing was unique to the house and should be replicated with the construction of the new chimney. And with that, I can answer any questions. Otherwise, I'll hand it over to Jane Longquist, who is the chair of the HPC. And after Jane, the applicant, Scott Bouson, will address the council.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Bodicker? All right, thank you, Ms. Bodicker.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your time.
Yes, Ms. Long, Commissioner, welcome.
Thank you. And thanks for letting me represent the HPC. And I'll open with just quick, this one. Oops, a little quick overview, very brief, of the Country Club District and heritage preservation there. And you likely know that being listed on the National Register is nice, but it's the state and local laws that offer the historic protection. None of the homes, 555 of them in the district, are heritage landmarks on their own. Rather, together, they're contributing resources if they were built during that 20-year period of significance, and they have significant historic integrity. The district's status as an Edina heritage landmark depends on a collective responsibility to maintain that historic integrity. Changes over time are normal, but when significant structural changes to street-facing facades are needed, the HPC has been tasked with deciding whether or not those changes are appropriate. Homeowners expect equal protection in the application enforcement of the plan of treatment so that everyone plays by the same rules. Luckily, overall, the district is in excellent state of preservation as based on the findings of the preservation consultant in 2019 when he did his tenure review. He said that most of the homeowners in the district exhibit a high degree of compliance. So as Emily shared, we had three COA amendments at our January meeting. And there are two key factors that I'd like you to understand for context as why we voted the way we did on the matter before you tonight. First, in the four years I've been on the HPC, we've never been asked to rule on this particular type of COA amendment before, an as-built review that would retroactively approve construction that differed from the approved plans. So we spent 30 minutes coming up with a rubric, how to do so appropriately. And we were very mindful of setting a precedent of forgiveness rather than permission. We use these key questions to frame our decisions. Would we have approved the current house if it came to us as the original COA? How do the deviations compare, not just to plan, but to the original home? And would the structure still be considered a contributing resource if we sign off on the unapproved changes for the planning department? So quickly, the summary of our decisions went as follows. Planned deviations for the Sunnyside home were unanimously approved because the dormer in question ended up being much more like the original home than the plans. Deviations for the Browndale home were approved in a split vote because the missing decorative tile around the entryway was placed elsewhere on the front facade. And we agreed with staff that the missing window boxes were not significant. So the second thing needed to understand, our decision on the Drexel house, is context on that house. It was the third COA amendment request for that house. So let me briefly give you some context there. The original COA for that home that was approved, the applicant sought, and we gave considerable more leeway because of the curving corner lot. It's a unique lot. And so we allowed multiple changes that are listed here that we've denied for other COAs. The important one is that we allowed removal of right up to the 50% mark of historic materials. And it was a big project that the applicant was taking on at the entry to the neighborhood, and it received unanimous approval at the time. Sadly, as the renovation went on, the consultant wrote that too much of the home's original material had been removed, and its status as a contributing resource was now in question. The amendment that Emily just summarized, I've added some text here to see some of the submissions. The building official said the chimney needed to come down for safety reasons, and that means we needed to approve replacement plans. And I think one key quote, all of this showed that the painted stone fireplace details in question were central to their request and to our approval. The best practice line at the bottom that's bolded by the preservation consultant was critical to our decision then. So why did the consultant and staff advise us on the chimney details? Why did their advice recently, now in January, change so dramatically when they said that these details were unsubstantial? Well, the HPC felt that not delivering this promised detail on a home that had lost so much of its historic integrity might be a more comfortable after-the-fact decision, but was not the correct decision. After-the-fact amendments should only be approved if they don't jeopardize the contributing resource status of a home. In closing, I'll just highlight that some of the articles I've listed that the applicant has used are not relevant here, such as screening by landscaping and so on, that we don't take into consideration. Or an exterior change that wouldn't need a COA if it was done on its own, that doesn't mean it's optional if it's part of a larger COA. I'll also just point out that Better Together links some other great context. There's audio of our meeting. You can hear our discussion. You can also hear allegations that our commission has been hijacked or has gone off the deep end. And there's significant public comment for all four of the COA applications, and we considered that carefully. So in closing, in my recent chair training, I was reminded that our role is to reflect community perspective and advise the council. So we advise you to consider the full context of this decision and uphold our vote. Neither the community commenters nor the HPC believe that the rules for Country Club should be selectively enforced. Thank you.
Thank you, Gresher.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for considering this matter tonight in this late evening here. I appreciate Ms. Longquist's comments. I mean, Ms. Longquist's done a great job with the Country Club District on preserving it for.
Make sure you identify yourself.
I'm sorry, Scott, you said 5,000 France Avenue South, Edina. My office is at 3939 West 50th Street in Edina. But it's why I want to say, I think Ms. Longquist's done a great job, you know, preserving the neighborhood in her involvement with the Heritage Commission. I appreciate that as a prior resident, so. But here tonight, what I think is a pretty simple matter, what Ms. Longquist talked about was significant changes are something that the HPC looks at. I don't consider this a significant change. It's a small change cosmetically to the chimney on the home that the homeowner has requested. The homeowner, Mr. David Petracchi, where the home was finished, he decided he liked the chimney as it was without the stove details on there. That we had, the stove details really were there because we had requested to put a fireplace out there. They denied the fireplace, but they want us to put the full fireplace stove. So the homeowner just asked me if, you know, we could ask the HPC if we could not have those on there. So thus, we had the amended COA application to the HPC. But if you go through Country Club, the, you scroll down there. I'm not sure how to scroll down this here. Like this here. So there's the home, there's the home as it is right now. And if you drive through Country Club, that's what most stucco chimneys look like. They don't have a full chimney detail on there. So, and also, when we tried to find white stones, there aren't any white stones available. We worked with Hedberg Basery. They didn't have white stones. So we basically would be putting stones on there and painting them. But I just didn't feel like on this, you know, beautiful new renovation, that that would be the appropriate thing to do. So those are the two reasons that the homeowner preferred not to do that. As you can see, the original was pretty deteriorated. It was painted over. A lot of cracking on there. And the reason we decided to appeal the decision were three reasons. Per the memo from consultant Vogel, he felt the project met the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, which are required for a design review. He said, while the exterior chimney is considered architectural character-defying, future of the house, the presence or absence of the outdoor fireplace does not represent a substantial facade alteration. These kinds of minor changes are allowed by the standards of rehabilitation and are not discussed in the district plan of treatment. So he had, his recommendation was to approve the project as-built. In fact, if you're, if you're living at Country Club, you couldn't take these types of stones off a chimney without a COA if you wanted to improve the look of it. So we consider a pretty minor change that still has the property meeting the plan of treatment. But as Ms. Longquist mentioned, there were, there were two other projects that they approved. I do not agree that the change to the Sunnyside home, while I have no problem with the home, I think it's beautiful. And as a local resident, I think it looks great. But they put up, the, they proposed a large front elevation peak dormer, and they put a small dormer on there. The original home had a shed dormer, which is where a roof kind of comes down. So the new dormer really did not look at all like the old one. Again, I'm not complaining about that house. I think it looks beautiful, but I don't agree with Ms. Longquist there. And then on the Browndale proposal, it was a very similar type of detail. It was, if you look at this finished home at Browndale, there was stone around the door. If you go back to the original proposal, you see the stone around the door here, which I think is much more significant. It's the first thing you see when you walk in the house is the stove detail around the door. And it was not put on the home here. The HPC felt that that was appropriate. So I don't agree with that either. I think those two changes were more significant. Again, those homes are beautiful. I have no problem with them. Not complaining about them. But I feel like, you know, for some reason, we have been kind of singled out by the HPC and some of the members. I feel like there have been more complaints about this project because it's the first home you see home you see when you drive in the neighborhood. But I think certain members of the HPC have policed this project selectively over other projects in the neighborhood. That's why you've seen the complaints you have about this. And I think the bias that there has affected their, the decision to not grant the amended COA. So for these reasons, we're asking you to please approve the amended COA for 4630 Drexel and I appreciate you considering this.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bousen.
Thank you.
Let me see if anybody's got questions for you or anybody else that's made a presentation Council members, questions for anybody? I've got a couple for Ms. Bodicker.
I have a, just a simple factual question. Which direction does this chimney face?
Faces towards the bridge.
Towards the bridge, okay.
To the south.
To the south.
Yeah, great. All right, thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Risher, go ahead.
Okay, this is a Mediterranean style? Okay, in the, but we're also getting language in the supporting documents from the developer that it's a Spanish colonial?
The Mediterranean is what it was classified when the district was established. So when it was, when it went through the original survey for the designation, it was classified as Mediterranean.
But those are two distinct architectural styles, true?
They are. A lot of homes in the Country Club District are not a true style, that is just one, it's a blend of a couple different ones.
Okay. And with the chimney on the original house, it looks like that's stone as well at the very top? And I'm just kind of wondering, the architectural detail at the bottom that is in dispute, as I was looking at this, I was sort of wondering, it would make sense to require the top to be done in stone too? It looks like there's a ridge around the top that kind of ties it together a little bit.
The, are you talking about the cap at the top?
The cap, yeah, that you can see on the original one.
There is a cap on the built one, I believe.
Okay.
Here at the top. Is that what you were referring to?
Right.
There were some additional stones, not just the fireplace around, there was a couple on either side on the original fireplace. But the new, newly constructed chimney replicates the existing chimney in size and measurement and angles and things like that.
Okay. And the developer did not have to provide the sort of quintessential ironwork that is part of this?
On, there, so there are a couple with photos, there were a couple elements that were still missing. I think the developer can speak to those. The one, there were some things that were weather-related, flower boxes and things like that were not addressed.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Pierce.
So, one question. In the presentation that was given, there was a slide that said no more than 49% and it exceeded that, so the home is in jeopardy of losing its designation. Can you just speak a little bit more to that?
During some, during construction, more walls needed to be replaced than originally planned. And that was kind of reviewed with the building official and with building plans that were submitted. The second part of your question was...
No, that, that was the question.
That was it?
Yeah, so, so that was the issue there. And then, now you're going to laugh when I say, "The second part of my question, but I didn't ask it." So in those scenarios, when there's a concern about further deterioration, what's the process for that?
The building official has overall discretion on whether or not things need to be replaced or not. So there was some conversation throughout the construction process that certain walls needed to come down or had come down because of the way they were currently standing. And so there was discussion with the building official.
So that's a collaboration between the developer and the building official?
Correct.
Is what you're saying, okay. And then, a couple of questions for Mr. Bousen. You mentioned that you felt singled out by the commission. And so, because you made that statement, I've got a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
How many other properties in this neighborhood has great homes, are great neighborhood homes?
We've developed seven other properties. I'd say we've had three other ones at this level of scope where it's a whole house renovation that we've done, also two new homes in the neighborhood.
Okay. And so in that seven homes, how many COAs have you had to request?
All of them have had a COA request.
Any idea how many that COAs?
It's probably, well, we've also had some detached garages. I'd say it's probably like nine.
In total?
Yeah.
Across the seven? Okay. What other developers are in the community? And then, you may not, so this is a general question to someone. What other, how many other developers are in the community? And then, what's the average of COAs of developers? Thank you.
So there's a wide variety of developers or architects, homeowners that come forward and request COAs. There isn't a, there's no limitation on who can request one. So as far as COAs, the HPC generally reviews eight to 10 COAs a year.
A year?
And there is some additional amendments that are requested throughout the year as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, stick with me there, Ms. Bodicker. Do you have, do you have photos of the old house again and then compare it to the new house?
Here are some existing photos back in 2020 with the original COA submittal. And then let me know when...
Okay.
I can move. There's some angles of the...
To me, the new house is dramatically different than the old house. And, and this new house plan overall was approved by the Heritage Preservation Board, is that correct?
Yes, the elevations on the screen were approved by the HPC.
When they came in for the certificate of appropriateness for the plan of treatment, the house on the lower left is the one that was approved.
Yes.
And then it must, it had that architectural feature on the chimney.
Yes, the original chimney was planned to remain. Throughout construction, it was deemed it needed to come down by the building official and so they came back to the HPC for how they were to reconstruct it.
I look at the size of the house compared to the old house, look at the size of the windows in the new one versus the old one. All of that approved by the Heritage Preservation Commission. I'm looking at the material that Mr. Bousen supplied and he's got a quote in there from our consultant on heritage preservation, Robert Vogel. Says, "As built, the project meets the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation", which means that he did build without the fireplace feature. I'll call it the feature. And so it meets the standards, which are the required basis for COA design review. "While the exterior chimney is considered architectural character-defining feature of the house, the presence or absence of the outdoor fireplace does not represent a substantial facade alteration. These kinds of minor changes are allowed by the standards for rehabilitation and are not discussed in the district plan of treatment." Do you concur with that, that those changes that he's, he's referring to are not mentioned in the, in the, in the district plan of treatment?
Yes. Staff recommendation was for approval of the changes based on consultant Vogel's recommendation, that the chimney itself was an architectural defining, or character-defining feature, but the detailing was not a significant change.
All right. So what I heard Commissioner Lonsbury say that if it's, one of the issues was whether this was, should have been a before or after-approved change. And what I heard you, I think, say, or Commissioner Lonsbury, if it's not a contributing resource, it can be approved after the fact. And that refers to non-significant changes. So what I'm taking Mr. Vogel to say is that this change is okay?
That was his recommendation, yes.
Right. I mean, his recommendation as a consultant or the, or the Heritage Preservation Board expert.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So he's defining it as a non-significant change and in his opinion, a change like that is therefore not a contributing resource and can be approved after the fact?
It's not after the fact, I can kind of address the timing. So with the building permit, for it to be closed out, one of the final steps is for the planning department or myself to go out there with the approved elevations and compare those elevations to what was approved. And with the request for a final inspection, I went out there, well, with the request for a final inspection and some additional complaints, I went out there to review the built elevations, they were ready to close the permit, and addressed the stone detailing that was missing. And then told Mr. Bousen, that kind of gave him his options, whether it was to request an amendment of the COA, or he could install the stones and then planning staff could sign off on the building permit and the building permit would then be closed. So it's, it's common practice...
Did he get a building permit without that fireplace on it?
He got the building permit originally with the original chimney remaining. So there was a change throughout that process when he deemed that the original chimney needed to come down.
And how about when you gave him the certificate of occupancy?
There isn't a certificate of occupancy that's granted with this because it's a remodel project and it's not a new home.
I had another question, no, it's just kind of slipped away. Oh, I know what it was. So now, he sold the house, correct? I mean, we've got a, we've got a new owner in there.
Yes, there is a new owner that is living in the home.
So what's, what's the obligation of the new owner to have us say the Heritage Preservation Board was right and the homeowner has to do what they say he has to do? Because it's not Mr. Bousen's house anymore.
It's not. He was the, he's the building permit holder and so when staff reaches out to him to get the building permit issued, or the building permit kind of closed out, it's Mr. Bousen that I've been contacting.
So maybe a more artful way to say it is, what if the homeowner says, "Well, I'm not, I'm not changing this. I like it the way it is, I'm not changing it, I own the house."
The building permit would just not be closed out then, at that point.
Which means what?
Um, Mr. Kendall, you want to address that question?
Yeah, back to Mr. Kendall.
Well, it means the building permit would not be closed out, Your Honor.
Yeah, it's not closed out, okay, all right. I mean, that's, those are all the kind of things I can think of asking about. I know that the, so you're saying that the consultant that we've used for years, his opinion is different from the Heritage Preservation Commission?
Yes.
On whether or not this design element needs to be on the house?
Correct.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, without being glib, I guess I would say, if someone else went to purchase the home and they did a check to see if there are any open permits, they would locate that open permit and presumably they'd want to resolve that before purchasing the home again.
So the question is, whether or not we want to grant the appeal of Mr. Bousen? Oh, yeah. Thank you for that. All right, we've had testimony input from the Heritage Preservation Commission. This is a public hearing matter and we heard from Mr. Bousen. Is there anyone else that wishes to testify?
Hello, can you name again?
Please.
Janey Weston, 6136 Burkeview. I'm a stone carver, I know stone. I can't help but say something about this. I know where you can get white stone, a very good durable stone. You should never paint stone. If you paint stone on an exterior application, it will deteriorate faster. That's, that's a fact. So historical people, don't do that, please, don't allow it. Not good. The point about the, if the building permit is not closed out, doesn't that mean that then the people that want to live in that house can't get a certificate of occupancy? That's my question.
Yeah, that was the question I asked. They didn't have to issue a COA because it was remodeled technically.
Okay. Because I've been watching the project too. It's very interesting.
It probably is a subsequent owner problem.
Okay, all right, thanks.
All right, this is a public hearing and we have another commissioner coming up to talk to us.
My name is Bob Cundy, I'm at 4521 Drexel Avenue in the Country Club. I am the commissioner that Scott Bousen believes to be biased against his company. And what I would point out to address that is I have twice voted to approve the initial scopes of his project. I have joined the majority in every single one of those votes. And actually, the lone dissenting vote to the August application for a COA that resulted in their appeal, I was the lone person who voted against it. I'm not against your company, Mr. Bousen. I'm against the outcomes of your projects. The project I spoke on 4633 Arden where the developer promises and is promising to build a applicant or a buyer, a home that can't be built. The developer in that case is great neighborhood homes. We should expect these outcomes if we allow these beginnings. There's a lot of stuff to clarify here, I'm going to write you a letter, I wrote you a letter last time. I hope you read it. Mr. Bousen doesn't want you to listen to me. I would argue that if you all listened to me during the June work plan meeting last year, that a lot of this could be avoided. There are several things to address here. Number one, we don't have to worry about what Mr. Petracchi has inherited as a property owner. He was party to the application for a COA last June, he was in the room. And you heard Mr. Bousen say that it was Mr. Petracchi's decision not to include the chimney detailing. So there's not an inherited violation here, it was his choice. They love to quote consultant Vogel. Consultant Vogel said in April of last year that as a result of this applicant's actions that the historic integrity of the home had been compromised. That was in April of last year. It is against that backdrop and context is key here. These other homes, they didn't ask for 49.99%. Mr. Teague, you admitted to me in your office that even before the fireplace had come down, that they had already taken down more than 50% of the building. So it's not about one detail that by itself on any other home, absent any other consideration, would be allowable or not allowable. It's, once you push something to the nth degree, eventually it's a no. Everything is about context. Further for context, yes, Mr. Vogel and the city recommended in January to approve this as-built. I would again argue that that's a level of comfort of telling someone, "It's already built, it's the middle of winter, are we going to make you go do this?" Go look at what Mr. Vogel said in June. He said that this authentic recreation of the fireplace or the chimney would restore a historically significant distinctive feature of the home that would otherwise be lost. So he said two different things. So why would the commission think that all of a sudden this changes? Why would he have ever said that if that was not true? If, if it was true that this didn't matter, then that would have been true in June. The only thing that changed is that it's uncomfortable to come back and make people do things the right way. And we begged you, I've been begging this council and the city for two years to prevent this from being the case, and yet here we are today in the last stage of a process where you ask for too much. If you get approval, you do even more. I told you, I guys saw this last year. It's the exact same thing on the exact same house with the exact same developer, again, two appeals, and somehow I'm responsible for this as a member of the HPC. We are doing exactly what you asked us to by calling out this type of behavior. Mr. Bousen has admitted in an Artisan Homes Tour video that their specialty is going into historic neighborhoods and tearing down houses. Mr. Mayor, your signature is on a document that says that the number one threat to the historic integrity of the Country Club is teardowns. The conflict here is not about Bob Cundy and Scott Bousen, it's about tearing down houses in a historic neighborhood. It has to stop.
Thank you, Mr. Cundy. Mr. Cundy raised an issue that we talked about some time ago, and that is, what is the status on some of the work that we directed to be done with respect to some of the inconsistencies that, that the Heritage Preservation Commission pointed out to us?
So staff and the city attorney have drafted on the ordinance and have changes to the plan of treatment as well as an escrow fee policy. So right now, we're waiting on consultant Vogel to review the amended, or the ordinance and the plan of treatment. The city is also in process of hiring a new preservation consultant because Mr. Vogel is kind of stepping down and starting his, stepping back from some of his work and starting his retirement process. So we're currently in talks of hiring a preservation consultant. We'd also like them to review the ordinance and the plan of treatment that is proposed. Once we get that kind of finalized, we, city staff is handing it over to a subcommittee of the Heritage Preservation Commission for their review. And then, at that point, once the subcommittee is ready, they'll bring it to the entire Heritage Preservation Commission for a formal recommendation. And then it will go through the public hearing process with the planning commission and city council.
Okay. And so what's, what do you think's the timing on all this? Because this is something that was raised a couple of years ago and we had a conversation between the council and the Heritage Preservation Commission about it last year, I think.
Staff has done with the draft, so we're kind of waiting for consultant Vogel and then ultimately the newly hired consultant to review it. We'd like to give the Heritage Preservation Commission Subcommittee one document and not send over subs, like additional changes that are proposed from different people. The timing of that right now, we're still working out, the hiring of a new consultant.
All right, okay. Any add-on?
Yeah, I would add that, you know, we hope to get something to them summertime, early summer.
Okay, all right.
As soon as we can.
Yeah, yeah, I know that you guys have a fearsome workload. All right, so any other questions from council? There, the motion that's, oh, wait a minute, no, we got, do we have anybody online?
I do have some callers online. No one is indicating a desire to speak at this time. As a reminder, if you are a caller and you would like to provide testimony in this public hearing matter, you need to press the star, then the number one on your telephone keypad. That signals to the operator that you'd like to speak. That's the asterisk symbol, then the number one. Not the pound or hashtag symbol, that takes you out of the queue. Asterisk symbol, then the number one. Let's give it just a second to see if somebody... Let's give it just a second to see if somebody pops up here. Still no signal. Maybe someone is just listening in this way.
All right, for those that are online or those that are listening in in other fashions or folks that are here, you can continue to provide testimony on this matter until noon on April 10th. I'm assuming that we're going to pass a motion that staff's recommending. And let me move to that now. Is there a motion to close the public hearing at noon on April 10th and continue the action on this item to the April 18 city council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pierce moves and Commissioner... Member Jackson seconds. Member Pierce moved the adoption of a motion to close the public hearing on this matter at noon on April 10 and continue the action on the item to the April 18 city council meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion, the state that say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. All right, we are on to reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. And let me get that up in front of me here. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-27 which accepts donations on behalf of the city of Edina?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of motion for Resolution 2023-27 which accepts donations on behalf of the city of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2023-27 say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. This reporting period or gifting period, if you will, two donations to the police department, both from the Edina Crime Prevention Fund, almost $2,000 for outreach and promotional items, and then an expensive dog crate, collapsible expensive dog crate for $1,350 approximately. So thank you to the Edina Crime Prevention Fund for that or those donations. Now we're on to Resolution 2023-22, which is a potential issuance of a conditional use permit for U.S. Internet at 6444 Xerxes Avenue. Director Teague?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. With this project, we have not received any additional feedback through Better Together. Since the last meeting and the discussion around building materials, the applicant has revised their plans. So the building would be entirely brick on the east side and north side, eliminating one of those variances that they were seeking. They're still seeking a variance to have no windows for security. But with those revisions, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit and that and the one variance to allow U.S. Internet to construct their utility building. And the applicants are here as well, if you have any questions for them.
Okay. It looked to me like you had them down as making a presentation, but you think just available for questions if council has them?
Yep.
Any council member have questions for U.S. Internet on this matter? All right. So it might be best to handle this by way of a motion and then we can have a conversation. So is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-22 which would issue a conditional use permit to U.S. Internet for that location that we learned about at our last meeting at 6444 Xerxes Avenue South in Edina?
So moved.
Sir.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce to adopt Resolution 2023-22 which is a potential issuance of a conditional use permit to U.S. Internet at 6444 Xerxes Avenue. We'll now have discussion, if there is any?
Let's do it.
Well, that two-week period brought a lot of... You didn't have any opinion?
I... No, I think this is a very good... You know, I like the way the building is trying to disappear. I think the request in this case, you know, to lower the height and not have windows is so pragmatic, and I really think we need to look at that requirement.
Thanks. All right, let's... Sounds like we can vote. All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2023-22 which would issue the conditional use permit and variance request by U.S. Internet for the property at... What is that? 60... I lost the address. 6444 Xerxes Avenue South in Edina. All those in favor of approving the resolution, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Wow, great testimony. Unbelievable. You know, I drove down there. I know some of the planning commissioners were concerned about that being the gateway to the Southdale District, but I was already past the building before I realized I had already passed it. So I didn't feel like it was any kind of a gateway to anything. And I know it's the old Odiology Building and the first building I saw then was the next-door neighbor, which was State Farm. And I think it'll be a good fit. You'll have beautiful landscaping and we're so keen about you being able to provide service throughout Edina from that location. And thanks for your patience in looking for the right location with our staff to be able to put this in place to serve not only Edina, all of Edina, but also Richfield. I think it'll be wonderful for both communities. So thanks for your patience this evening and thanks for your patience throughout the process, and we look forward to having U.S. Internet citywide in our community. I don't know if you want to come up and comment about when you think that'll all take place Maybe come off to the side and give us your name and business address, please.
Yeah, sure. My name's Kurt Wang, Edina resident, 5301 Mirror Lakes Drive, and business address is 12450 Wayzata Boulevard in Minnetonka. The plan, we will continue to do significant portions of Edina over the next couple of years. It probably takes between three or four years to build up the entire city.
Okay, good. Thanks, Mr. Wang.
Yeah, thank you all. I appreciate it.
Glad you could be with us tonight.
Yeah, it's been a pleasure.
All right.
I appreciate working with you.
Well, you saw it was an interesting evening.
Yeah.
At least we think so.
Well, there's some passion. You gotta like that.
All right.
Good. Appreciate you all. Thank you very much.
Next matter is 4404 Valley View Road is a resolution involving a subdivision and redevelopment contract, and Director Teague has this matter. This is back to the property at the old Burley's Harrison site. Director Teague?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This was the item that was carried over from your March 7 meeting to address that rezoning issue. So this subdivision simply creates individual lots, so the units that have been approved can be sold separately. And we've addressed the issue about the survey being accurate, so I won't go into that. There's also a development contract associated with this. There's no public improvements with this project with the exception of the irons that are being set. So the contract really ensures that the irons get set to mark the property lines, and those would have to be put in prior to any certificate of occupancy for the first unit. So with that, we are recommending approval of the resolution that approves the preliminary and final plat for the development on the site.
Anybody have any preliminary thoughts or does somebody want to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-16?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves.
Second.
Member Pierce seconds the adoption of Resolution 2023-16 which would approve the preliminary and final plat and the development contract between the city homes and the city of Edina. Any further discussion? Question? Yes, Member Rissler.
I do want to say by doing this subdivision, we are creating lots that have very small buildable area on them. And so we... One of them, the westernmost, we're talking maybe 150 to 200 square feet of legal buildable area. And that really bothers me. This is Edina, and I think when people purchase a home, they shouldn't have to wonder if the legal buildable area is... You know, that's... What is that? That is so small. That's like a shed. So I do have real serious concerns about this, and I cannot support this.
All right, thanks, Member Rissler. Okay, any further comment? Yes. Member Agnew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when we talked about this last time, we reviewed that there are ultimately two different pathways, as I understand this, so kind of looking to Director Teague for confirmation on this. There are two different routes in order to create the lot lines that enable these units to be sold. One is kind of what we see in front of us of dividing it into four, like, unique parcels. And the second is what is more typical within condominiums in which it's just on the walls of the building. Is that correct? Am I understanding that?
Yes, that is correct. And those types of subdivisions, you typically see after the units have been built, so they can get the legal descriptions around the outer walls of the unit. But you are correct.
Can you give me a high-level overview of kind of the nuances or the differences between those and how we should think about those as a city?
They're very similar, really, in that anything outside of the walls, it's another lot that's platted and they're maintained by the homeowners association. With this project, there's a similar situation. Even though there's individual lots that are associated with each unit, there is an association that'll maintain all the exterior lawn maintenance, et cetera. So they're really very similar. It's just how the lots are shaped.
Thank you. So final question on that line of topic. So if we were to reject this today as an example, as the request is before us, could they build the four units and then come back and request that other option of building out the parcels based on the walls?
It's possible. They couldn't sell an individual unit until the subdivision is created, but they could still build them. They could be rental, so...
Okay, thank you very much. And kind of where I was going, and just to bring everyone else along, I kind of echo Member Rissler's concerns in the idea that these will be four extremely tiny parcels of land within Edina. And just thinking, you know, right now, yes, they're ultimately, what, two duplexes that we're seeing there are townhomes in this area, but 20, 40 years down the road, if there is evolution on this site, just thinking through, like, what does it mean to have such micro parcels of land? And so I was really thinking about this option of really consolidating that or limiting that ability by doing it on the walls, fairly, you know, representative of what we see with condominiums. At the same time, I know that the intent of this development from the beginning was to be for sale units. And I also understand that that's probably... Our developer probably wants to sell some of those before they're completely done. I don't know if that would be required in order to finance some of the work. But just thinking through, right, like, what does that mean to this business? And how would that change the dynamic of what this development is supposed to be if all of a sudden we were potentially pushing it down the path of being a rental? And so even though I prefer the idea that this... These lots were defined by the boundaries of the walls of the building rather than, you know, just almost slicing the lot into four micro pieces, I don't want to prevent the developer from being able to sell these units prior to that taking place after construction is complete. And so I will support this subdivision as presented, even though I don't love it.
Okay, appreciate that analysis. Okay. All right, we've got a motion and a second, and we've had some council discussion on this matter. I will say that having been through several iterations of potential development on that piece of property, including originally down the flats that was approved, and they couldn't figure out how to make them affordable by going underground with parking, it's such an odd-shaped piece of property and has such confining limitations to it that when we found this project, it seemed like it was a really good fit for a tight piece of property and there's going to be... What I hear from realtors all the time is that there's not enough townhouse product in Edina. And this is going to be four beautiful townhouses that people are going to be able to live in, and it's going to finish off that whole Valley View Wooddale area, I think, consistent with the small area plan that was done several years ago. And it's transformed that neighborhood, I think, in terms of what's happened there. So I'm going to support this as well. So we've got a motion and a second. We've had discussion. Anybody else have any further comment? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2023-16 approving the preliminary and final plat and the development contract with City Homes on the property at 4404 Valley View Road, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Carried, 4-1. Okay, now we're finally getting to sketch plan conversation here. We need the ninth inning stretch, not the seventh inning stretch. Man, I could barely stand up.
I'll just quickly introduce the item and then I'll set up the PowerPoint for the applicant. But this is a...
Stick your pipe.
So this is a sketch plan review for you to provide non-binding comments on a future potential project. It's essentially replacing that Phase II apartment that was considered as part of the preliminary approval, although while the parking study, the traffic study looked at this project as apartments in the future, there was talk of hospitality as being a potential in the future. I would add that with a formal application, because the parking and traffic study didn't address a hotel, that study has to be updated, you know, and all the restaurant that's associated with it and the ballroom as well. I will note that the site is short parked by about 150 spaces. So that's another item that the consultant is going to be looking at as well. So we don't have answers as far as will that work at this time, but it will be studied. Setback change on 72nd. The original plans showed a 35-foot setback. These plans are 30 feet. So the Design Experience Guidelines talk about a 30-foot setback on 72nd. So they'd like to come a little closer to the street, but it's still within the guidelines. And Ted Carlson is here, along with Nate Enger, to present the detail of the project.
Carlson, welcome. My name's Ted Carlson with Orion Investments, and we office at 6550 York Avenue in Edina. So on behalf of Nate and Terry from ESG and Drew Stafford, my partner at Orion, you know, we spent a lot of time and effort working on 7250 and accordingly the next phase and what 7200 is going to be. So there's been a lot of heavy talk tonight, a lot of, you know, serious issues. We're here to, you know, have this interactive opportunity with you all to understand what you may like, don't like, opportunities for improvement as we talk about what we have planned for 7200. As we went through the approvals process with 7250, we talked about possibly multifamily, possibly hospitality. As we take a look around our community and see the multifamily development and those trends of which we are participating in, we believe that in accordance with community needs, Southdale Design Experience Guidelines kind of ideas and suggestions, and really just something new and fresh to our communities, similar to the office buildings, that hospitality is a really unique fit and can really fill what we think is a neat niche market in our community. So with that, without any further ado, I'll turn it over to Nate Enger at ESG, and we'll stand for questions and comments.
I think it's on. Oh, there it is. All right, we got it. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. Thank you. It's good to be in front of you again. I have the unique opportunity to...
Introduce yourself.
Oh, I apologize.
Mr. Business Director.
Nate Enger. I am a partner with ESG Architects at 500 Washington Avenue, Minneapolis. So I have the opportunity to kind of walk you through tonight where we are with the 7200 portion of the kind of previously contemplated total site. So I'm going to go through this relatively quickly because... So I'm going to go through this relatively quickly because I think a lot of this is going to be reiterative for all of you, but please, as we get deeper in the conversation, Ted and I are here to answer any additional questions you might have. Just brief project overview, I think you're all very familiar with where the site is, so I won't go into too much detail with that. Certainly not existing conditions, although I think we probably are finally getting to the point where this is not what it looks like, and maybe there will be some green shortly, which would be a vast improvement. So what we're talking about today is the 7200 portion, which Ted refers to as hospitality. To be more specific, we're looking at about 150 key hotel here. And we're looking at this as a boutique hotel opportunity with a ballroom, some event space, kind of a destination bar and restaurant, as well as kind of the boutique hotel experience. It's important to us to really explain what we mean by that because we've had some questions in our neighborhood meetings that we've already had, and I think we just want to be transparent about what our intent is. To us, boutique really means something, an experience, a unique experience, a bespoke experience that you can't have anywhere else. So while this hotel may be branded, it certainly will be an experience unlike any other hotel that you have here in Edina. My partner said it best when he said that if we do our jobs right, this is going to feel more like a really high-end destination restaurant than it will a hotel. And so that's really the energy and the vision that we're bringing to this project. We are building, of course, on the Design Experience Guidelines, which we're very familiar with having worked through the 7250 project. We're building on that pedestrian experience that we've already kind of laid the groundwork for, and we're really plugging into that, and we're excited to have ongoing conversation about how this project can engage on that infrastructure that's already in place. So this is kind of the first new slide that perhaps the members have seen. So on the north side of the site, on the right side of the image you'll see is the proposed hotel. This is very early days, so we've studied a lot of different configurations and orientations, and again, we're happy to have those discussions today. But as it stands, this is kind of the programmatic fit that we're looking at right now to get us to that 150-room quantity. You'll see, too, we maintain the north-south connector that has been such a strong component of tying the site together and really allowing access through the site, and then the other strong components of the east-west pedestrian promenade that we call Danila, and the connection to kind of the open green space and the stormwater management area. And we can certainly talk about that more in detail as well.
So I think it's important to note that nothing has changed on the site plan or the site layout.
Accurate.
Unchanged.
Unchanged. Just a little bit more in detail. So 150 keys approximately, about 146,000 gross square feet. We are staying under that 72-foot building height that was a condition of the approval previously. That includes a 16-foot floor-to-floor for the first floor, which was a condition of approval last time around. As Director Teague mentioned, we're still working through the parking requirements for this, but we will have underground parking here. So unlike even 7250, there will be really no surface parking on this parcel. It's just not part of the functionality that all that will happen underneath. This exhibit just really shows kind of the prominence of the entrances, and I should point out that there is an additional entry that we're contemplating right where it says Danila and public easement. We do anticipate that there will be a connectivity with that Danila pedestrian access on the south side of the building. We're showing an entry off of France. We believe that to be mostly a pedestrian entry. We're not advocating that cars are going to be stopping on France and dropping people off. The two primary entries for this building will be along 72nd and then off of this public turnaround that we're creating as you turn in off of 72nd there, and that would be the Uber drop-off or kind of like a large gathering sort of entryway. These are just very, very early plans of what an underground structured parking would look like. It's important to note that with the hospitality use, we have a significant service demand for that. So a portion of this underground ramp does need to be used for what we call back-of-the-house spaces, deliveries and such. We are making a concerted effort to move all deliveries off of 72nd and Gallagher onto the north-south connector. So there will not be any neighborhood-facing deliveries, trash pickup, anything like that. And this document begins to kind of represent that. This is a little bit deceiving because the plan has been turned to the right, but north is actually to the right here, and this is just a blown-up view of kind of that first level. And you can see the myriad of uses that are really happening here. We believe as a design and development team that the amount of activation that can happen on the first floor of hospitality use like this will really bring kind of a vibrancy and dynamic energy to the site that it hasn't had in probably a very long time, if ever, I guess, in our recent history. So we're looking at a restaurant on the first level, a hotel lobby, some active use, and all of this potentially has glass around it, which means that we can see through these spaces, we can see people in these spaces engaging, and so that activity will really be broadcast out to the area at large. Typical floor with units, it's important to note that on kind of that second floor area, we will have some uses that potentially are going to be shared with 7250 across the street. So that's a really important part of our plan here is that we are actually encouraging traversal between these two buildings, and part of that will create an energy and a dynamicism for Danila Plaza just by people moving back and forth. Fitness center could be shared between these two things, the ballroom or conference center could be shared. So we anticipate that sort of movement happening. And then this image is just to kind of show the height comparisons between the two projects. Like I mentioned, we're still staying below that 72-foot height, but in addition, these two buildings will be paired in such a way that they'll feel very appropriate next to each other. Probably worth mentioning here in this image that while this is very early days, our anticipation for the design of the project is that they will be complementary, not identical. So we'll see a lot of the same detailing occurring, the level of quality, materiality, the level of transparency will be very similar. However, the typologies of these two buildings require different levels of transparency, opaqueness. So they will inherently look different, but again, the quality will be very similar and Just a quick section, and this is, I think, maybe speaking a little bit about what Director Teague mentioned. This is along the 72nd side where we are 30-feet foot setback, but also as part of your Design Experience Guidelines, we have another setback at 60 feet. And this is just to demonstrate that we are anticipating those sort of massing moves to provide more breakdown in the building and not be so monolithic. And then just a couple of quick aerial views, which may be fruitful in the following discussion that we can certainly come back to, just showing it from varying angles and showing the interplay between the two projects. So you can see here, this is probably the most notable image in that we're really making an attempt to step back both the massing and the full building from the adjoining areas. This site in particular has a much broader expanse to the neighborhood developed because of the stormwater retention area. And I know that's part of the commentary that we got in the neighborhood meetings is that that was appreciated and understood. So with that really brief presentation, I think Ted and I would be happy to stand for any questions you all might have.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I don't know if you had one of the images that would show this best, but I'm curious about the elevation difference between that north-south connector and that circular drop-off.
The north-south... Oh, sure, sure.
I think that would be the height of the wall, more or less.
Is that what you're...
Yeah, I guess I'm asking, it's a full story, almost. Is that correct?
I can tell you the number is 10 feet, Council member. I don't know that I actually have that section, but at the lowest point of that connector, which you can kind of see in the middle right of this image, that's about 10 feet. So by the time you get to that, you were looking at the drop-off specifically?
Correct. The circular...
By the time you get there, it's probably around six feet of differential in height, which would be consistent with kind of what we're doing on the other side of the property at 7250.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
And then one of the things that you mentioned is that in this Phase Two plan, that there isn't any surface parking included, that it'll all be underground. Is the intent then for this site that there will never be surface parking? Is that part of the initial Phase Two out of paving this as temporary parking?
Yeah, I can address that, Councilmember Agnew. I think the Phase Two temporary parking was really a belt or suspenders for us with Phase One, for lack of a better term, that we never really wanted to invest the time or money to do that. It was if we did not come up with or identify a good solution for 7200 that if we had to, we could put in that parking. So to answer your question, we don't plan or anticipate on building temporary parking on the site.
Thank you. And then, I don't know if this is much of a question or a comment, so I'll just say it. When I look at this, the way that it looks like that rooftop is, I'm thinking about like the rooftop terrace specifically, is facing towards where that neighborhood is behind. I'm conscious of sound noise going into that neighborhood. So I don't know if you can speak to how you were thinking about that and if there's potentially a different orientation, if you could wrap that around closer to France Avenue, but just speak to how you're thinking about where the rooftop terrace is.
Thank you, Councilmember. I do want to clarify, just so I make sure I understand your question accurately. When you are referring to the rooftop terrace, are you referring to this kind of larger open space in the foreground of this image, or are you referring to the kind of trellised piece kind of on the corner there?
Yes, the more trellised piece where there would potentially be people at late at night, 10, 11, maybe midnight. I don't know what the hours would be or the intention behind what that rooftop would be used for, but just really conscious of if there is late-night events there, the impact to that neighborhood.
It's a great question. In fact, this is a question that was echoed during our neighborhood engagement meeting. So we've actually already had a chance to socialize those kind of questions. It's important for us to kind of be very transparent about what we think this use is. We don't think this is going to be the type of use, and certainly we aren't looking at users that would advocate or utilize this for kind of late-night, kind of party or event gatherings. This is a much more kind of high-end, we're calling it boutique, but it would be a much more controlled environment. And Ted, maybe you can speak to that more.
Yeah. I think what we want to provide here is a curated, high-end experience. And so we will spend, if we bring this forward with a formal application, a lot of time to identify, one, what are sound considerations, possibly with a study. Number two, ways to mitigate that. And three, use thoughtful design, and we'll place it on the France Avenue side.
Thank you. Those are the only questions I have at this point.
Just a handful of questions. One, could you speak more about the neighborhood meeting that you had? How many people participated? Just in general, you've shared two bits of feedback from that. If you could just share.
Sure. Yes, happy to, Councilmember. Thank you. That was a week and a half ago. I'm losing track of time in my old age.
I think it was, yeah.
Yeah. So we had between 25 and 30 attendees. It was a virtual meeting, so as it relates to the site, it kind of felt like consistent with the amount of engagement with the Cornelia neighborhood. I would say that the feedback that we got fell kind of in a couple categories. One was sound and impact on the neighborhood. I think that was, we saw a consistent theme with just being curious about what that meant. The other kind of level of engagement was about traffic. And like Director Teague had mentioned, we're not in a position to be able to comment on that yet because we don't have the study, but certainly as we indicated in the neighborhood, once we have that information, we'll certainly be ready to comment on it. And then the third piece was, I just think the overall operation and management of the facility, again, getting back at Councilmember Agnew's question about what type of experience we'd expect this to be.
Boutique hotel. Boutique hotel. You talked about that a little bit. Give me some examples of what's a boutique hotel.
Sure, yeah. Locally, I think some of the most well-known examples would be like the Vikings Lakes Hotel in Eagan.
Got it.
If you're familiar with that. So I mean, the hallmarks of something like that are you walk in that hotel and you're seeing things that you've never seen before. The carved wood columns, the environment, kind of the way it's branded, the types of rooms that you see in that hotel. These are things that you're not going to go to another city and find. So when we talk about a boutique hotel, it's going to be uniquely Edina, and it's going to pull in elements that are very unique, not only of this location, but the city as a whole.
Just to expand on that, when I think of boutique, I'm not thinking about the size of the mass, I'm thinking about the feel and the design and the fit and the finish. And so another good one to look at might be the Noel in Nashville. We referenced the Hewing here locally. It's just kind of a curated bespoke experience for patrons of the hotel with a great food and beverage piece.
I've been there. Yep. Okay, so that's good. And then two questions in terms of use. So I will say, I don't really know how I feel about there being a hotel there yet. I think at least what you're showing and describing is definitely intriguing for sure. And so two questions. One, with Phase One, we talked a lot about public realm. And so in, you know, in this picture, you're showing, actually, maybe the aerial view is better, the... Yeah, that one's good, I guess, yeah. And so when you talk about the, kind of the ebb and flow of the two structures, and then you've got the public realm, the green space, the plaza, those areas, how do you envision ensuring that those areas, the public feels welcome to be a part of that? I mean, we've had conversations before that, you know, when you put a hotel in the middle of green space or even near a park, people kind of feel like, well, no, that's the hotel's property and it's not as inviting for the public.
Yeah. I can take maybe the first question. Great question, and I think those planning principles are really important. As you, I think, appropriately note, buildings that open up onto spaces directly can oftentimes kind of own that space. And so things like grade-level outdoor dining would be one of those things that we would see potentially kind of visually owning the space, whereas something that kind of fronts that space and maybe there's windows, but there's not like a large opening presence there would be more inviting to people outside of those uses. So for our team, that point is going to be really, really important because, as you say, this is a public amenity, and we don't want people to feel like they can't go eat a sandwich because they're going to have people looking at them. I don't know the exact solution for that yet because we don't know the program yet. But what you're identifying is certainly something the design team is going to be continually looking at and making sure that it's appropriate with the use.
Yeah, and just to tack on to that, I think there's been a lot of thoughtful design with Confluence, our landscape architect, with Director Miller, Director Teague, and then Director Cipione, about how people move through the site. And what's not represented here is the dimensionality or the artwork or some of the programming we're looking at for food trucks and other events in and around to support not only the office building, but potential patrons of the hotel and beyond into the neighborhood because those are meant to be gathering events. So I think it's incumbent on us to make sure that we do a good job of making it an inviting place to be.
Okay. And then my last question. I am like, I'm not an architect, so with this building, I'll just kind of explain my, I don't know if it's a concern, but I'm asking for your insight. There are instances where if we have so much glass on a building that has a certain height and... and then there's residential behind it, when the sun hits those panels, you can, it radiates heat. And so I actually can't tell from looking at the presentation, and I actually don't know, but hopefully you do. What's the, like, what's the distance from a glass structure that would kind of dissipate that sense of overheating from the sun hitting those panels? And then what does that look like in the context of your design?
That's a great question. It's also a technical question, and part of the answer I'm going to give you, you're not going to love, which is, it depends. But in this particular case, what you're referring to is kind of a heat island effect phenomenon. You've probably heard that. Now, in general parlance, like, heat island can impact not just glass, but, you know, absorptive surfaces. The specific item that you're talking about is reflective heat. So I don't know that I can give you an exact dimension for that. What I can say is that, at least as it relates to, and this image is deceiving, but let's get back here. So, yeah, this is great, right? So if we look at the west side of this, we're probably 400-plus feet on the west side before we even get anywhere close to houses. So that side, I understand the concern. I don't have any particular concern about that, because the microclimate in that area is impacted not just by the glass, but by basically the stabilizing quality of the stormwater pond, right? It's going to balance out any of that out. On the north side, again, we probably have 100 feet before there, and that, without even giving you a number, I can feel very comfortable that that microclimate's going to be generated from glass, is probably not going to impact those occupants. And of course, we have France, and we have the Danila side, the south side. The south side has the added benefit of being shaded by the 7250 building, so we're not going to have a lot of incident or direct radiation right on that glazing. So if there were a place that I would think there's proximity where your concern might come into play, it would be on the north side. But as we all know, the sun doesn't shine from the north, so I think that's probably okay there. The other thing I might point out, too, is that the design guidelines do have a requirement for like 75% glazing, and so from one side, we really like that for the activity activation, but for exactly the reason you're talking about, I might add that not only the radiation, but also the glare that's created. Yeah, I hope that was helpful.
Yep, yep. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I forget that the elevation of this site is really kind of funky, and I know that affects it, so take that in mind with my comments. But as I was looking at this, I was really wishing, actually, if you'd stay where you were, that was perfect. When I was looking at this, I was really wishing you could flip it and have the ballroom on the 72nd Street side. Then you're, if you're out, a neighborhood person walking, you're going to walk by people dancing, people learning, activity that's really a positive thing. Instead, it feels more like a fortress on the Danila Plaza, instead of, and then that lawn on the north side is a pretty standard hotel. No one's ever going to use it for anything other than to mow, and if you could flip it, it increases the size of the plaza. So that's my idea. I know I'm not a civil engineer, so I can't fix the elevation. And again, that driveway coming off of 42nd Street, I wish we could use the street instead of a second curb cut there, and sort of come down the street and to turn into the roundabout. So I don't know how much the elevation pays, plays into that, but in an ideal world, that's what I would prefer to see. And then that opens up the communication with the office building, right? So you want to see people walking across, using the restaurant, using the ballroom as a conference room kind of thing, you know, having something. So in an ideal world, that's what I'd like to see. And then, it's a small thing, but one of the things we're looking at with the fire station down on 76th Street is we've got that same thing, we're going to have a retention pond. How are you going to see it from the street? And so you've got a power box at the bottom of the hill of Danila. I would love to see some sort of landmark, so that when you're walking down France, you're invited to come down, because you're not going to see it as you go 72nd Street. The neighbors will know it's there, but if you're out visiting Edina and you're walking down France, I'd like you to say, "Oh, that looks really cool. Let me go down and explore it," right? Because we've got this lovely public space, and we want to have, so some idea of drawing the eye down there. So that's it. I would love to flip it, but I don't know if that's possible.
No, thank you. I think our design team, and one of the things we talk about when we're in front of groups like this, is that we go through many different iterations, so I think it's worth studying. We've studied it before, and I think we will expand upon that. With regards to one driveway, we prefer that, frankly. I think it's safer, it's better. I think a lot of patrons here would use a valet service. Makes sense to stay on more of an internal, if you would, than in-and-out external. So we're working through that with civil, civil engineering, to see if we can come up with a good solution there. So thank you.
And I'd also just mention, too, that Commissioner Miranda actually had a very similar comment, if you heard that. So we do agree. I just want to address the flipping, because I think it is very appropriate, and your comment is very well-taken. I do think there is some merit to that. As we continue working through this, the program's really going to dictate that, right? This may not be the final form of the building, so maybe there's a hybrid, but I do really like the visual of walking by there and seeing maybe just a couple of feet up, people kind of mingling. That's what this is about. It's an activation node, and if we can do that through engaging with those uses, it's better for everybody.
Well, yeah, and then furthermore, it may have been in our community neighborhood meeting, there's the comment was, well, ballroom or gathering center could be unique, and that you could take, we have platform or viewing areas, it might be a bit of a stretch, but areas along that pond, which would be great photo opportunities with a nature background.
I did want to address your other comment. I'm sorry. I really liked what you were talking about with drawing people through, and one of the things that our team is working through right now with Danila is creating a series of kind of visual art pieces that might start up at the confluence of the setback along France, and visually carry your eye down. And so, yes, we're not going to be able to do all the heavy work by building a 30-foot tower, right? But we can visually link these things to create that sense of exploration as you move your way down. So I really like that. That resonates as well with us, and it's something that we're looking at currently.
All right. Thank you.
I, too, want to flip this, and one of my biggest concerns is the neighborhood.
This is a transition zone. I wasn't thinking of flipping it onto 72nd Street because it would just sort of blast, I mean, I see sunrise right next door, and when I walked by there, it looked like there was an area that is protected by a fence that's an outdoor seating area, and I just can't help but think about how this is going to impact people in that building and then the residents who are to the west. And again, this is a transition area. And I did get a very detailed email from a resident who was saying that there are a lot of elements to this that do not meet the Design Experience guideline, and have we had Mick Johnson look at this particular design?
He did provide a review for the first phase and second phase.
With a hotel?
Not with a hotel.
Okay, because putting a hotel on the west side of France, we've never done that, right? This is new, in a transition zone. Okay, so I really want us to think about that. The other thing is, can you go to the image that shows what this looks like along France It's, you know, I kind of want the ballroom opening up onto France Avenue, you know, or, you know, trying to, that interest could be on that side instead of bumping up against the neighbors. And I don't know if there could be a cutout like there is at the U.S. Bank site, you know, so you could have cars pull in, but the idea of the ballroom with the drive-through, the way it stands right now, I just hear car doors opening and closing, you know, late at night, people being bothered by that, and I am concerned. And I did hear your, the concept is this is going to be a place where you're going to have weddings, bar mitzvahs, you know, gatherings where people stay and they want to stay and talk and, you know, be with people, you know, until 11 o'clock at night, like us. But, you know, I think we really need to look at this through the lens that this is a transition zone, okay? And we need to figure out whether this fits. I do have a lot of concerns about putting a hotel. Again, we've never done this on the west side, never done this in a transition zone. That is all I have right now.
Thank you.
I was just trying to look at that schematic where the ballroom was that Member Risher was referencing. I'm going to go back to that 21, I think it was, slide 21.
I apologize, I don't have slide numbers on here.
Okay.
It says at the top. I see it now. Thank you.
Yeah, or the bottom left-hand corner.
Both of those are appropriate. Thank you. It is 11 o'clock after all.
Maybe I can find another 21 on there for you somewhere. I was trying to track along with Member Jackson on, and I don't know, we were talking about the same thing here, but the notion that if you left a building in this present orientation where it kind of opens up to the west, and frankly, if I were living to the, to the west of the hotel and looking back towards it, I'd like that, I personally like that open environment where it's, you get to see something other than a big wall, you get to see activity and things going on, and I like that idea. And the concept of a hotel over there? Well, the truth is, we've never really had many hotels in Edina, so we got, you know, we've just got a couple. We've got three. And I'm okay with thinking about this on the west side. I think usage-wise, I'd like to see some data around traffic and occupancy rates and, you know, trips in and out, and, you know, compared to the office space, what kind of trips you generate. But it does strike me that if you look at this configuration, you come in off of 72nd, I think it is, isn't it, 72nd?
That's correct, yes.
So if you're coming off France Avenue, there's that, there's that left-turn lane there. There's a dedicated, as I remember it, a dedicated left-turn lane.
Onto 72nd.
Yeah, onto 72nd.
Yes, if you're northbound on France.
So when we talked about this a couple of developments ago, what we did was, we said, you come in off France Avenue, and then it's a, it's a left-in, but it's always a right-out, so that we're not pushing people into the neighborhood. And there will be people locally that will come in from the west if this was the design configuration, and, but it will be, most people, I think, would come in off France Avenue, so if we make them go back out to France Avenue, that's, that's something to really think about. This notion, the way you got this designed where you can go into the circle and drop somebody off, then you got to go back out and to the west and come back in again and go in the, into the parking garage. I think that, that seems like something that we could figure out in terms of how to either use a circle drive or go straight ahead and go down, in and down. I don't know how much depth you've got to work with to make a curve there, make a turn, but at least that's something I'd think about is, because this street, even though it's a street, it's going to be treated like a Wernhof, I think.
Yes.
People are going to walk on it. They're going to see that beautiful wide sidewalk there and all that public space, and I think by the time the landscaping's done, and what we could potentially approve regardless of what the building is, that is going to be a beckoning sort of public space, west, the sidewalk and west, to me. So keeping cars off of that street, it kind of doubles as a Wernhof, I think, is a good idea. So that tells me that we had to figure out a way to get people in, underground in the hotel without going out and around and back down in again. At least that's the way I'm reading the plan, or the schematic.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think that's, that is a good comment. One of the criteria that we're dealing with right now is understanding kind of the vehicle turning radius, and so I just want to reiterate that this is one configuration that we're looking at, and we agree, I think, with the resident comments that we're getting about kind of collapsing all that, making it more legible, making it more secure. That's probably for us, and what I would imagine is, once we start collapsing that, questions about the ballroom and how this thing kind of curves around that are going to start to resolve themselves. I mean, they're all interdependent in some ways, so we really appreciate that feedback. It's certainly something that we're looking at, and we'll take that to heart, I think, for the next iteration.
Yeah, and I think it's, it certainly merits more study, but I think the noise concern is aligned with the neighborhood, because we're, if we're going to provide a curated experience, it can't be noisy and loud and annoying. People will be trying to sleep. And secondly, as it relates to the orientation of the ballroom, as we study things over and over again, we're trying to create activation, and that best interior activation is along the plaza and along the pedestrian pathways, and maybe utilizing that stormwater feature. So that's kind of why it landed where it did, but I think we will study it further. We need to study it further. That was just our initial thought of how do we bring people and activate it? Well, let's put the most activated use right in the middle of the site. Whether that thought process is right or not, we're not sure, but I think it's great feedback for us.
Yeah. I, as that Member Risher raised, an interesting point about the ballroom. You know, on the one hand, if it's got glass walls on it and you can see people in there at night having a wedding celebration or some other kind of event, that all seems good until about 9 o'clock at night, or, you know, especially in the wintertime, and then you want that thing all lit up until midnight on that side, so I think that where that ballroom gets placed is something to think about.
If I may, two, one other thing to consider, for your consideration, and Councilmember Pierce's comment kind of reminded me of this, is one of the things we really want to do with Danila, because it is pocketed in between these two buildings, is make sure that it is a safe environment, and the best way to do that without having people standing around kind of guarding this thing is getting activation and eyes on that area. So we're trying to make security important as well, and so that would, that would be another reason, keeping the ballroom in those highly active spaces, looking out onto that place, making sure that people feel comfortable after 9 o'clock at night, because that's when that space is, could be potentially challenged.
Yeah, I think the landscape lighting there will be, well, you, you know, we would, we would expect, and you would want beautiful landscape lighting and landscaping through that, that area. Member Risher, just cause her to think of something that she wanted to comment on quickly.
This is not related, and it's an easy one. What's going to happen with the cell phone tower?
Oh, great question. That is going to be removed, and the equipment would be on the roof of 7250.
I thought, I remember Agnew raised an interesting point, too, and one other thing that I would expect you to say, and I think you will manage it this way, but I would think rooftop, rooftop activity in good weather will cease at a certain time, you know? So that's another way to monitor the thing, is control of hours of use.
And two, I think, again, Councilmember Pierce's earlier comment, maybe you weren't implying this necessarily, but the location of that rooftop terrace also is to extend the season, right? So putting that on the south side of that corner allows us to use that deeper into the season into October, so that's part of the reason.
It's their point.
And then last, if I just, I'd like to touch on just mixed use really quick, which is a core tenet of the Design Experience Guidelines. The other piece of that is parking, which Director Teague referenced. When we think about boutique curated hotel experiences, oftentimes, that's valet parking, and most hotel users today, we believe, use rideshare. So what we're, what we will study in depth is how to have complementary uses between the two sites, where office parking during the day is utilizing part of the hotel, and the hotel and events, nights, weekends, are using the office parking. I think that's a very, very key element of part of our why, and how it works together to keep those cars hidden and to not overbuild parking.
You've been coming in here long enough, you knew that's where I was going next.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you got, you, you just, I was going to ask you the question about shared parking facilities, because you're underparked. I mean, I think this adds another dimension to, let's say, living in Edina, that there's one more ballroom that is, you know, available, and there aren't that many, and people are looking for event space and for nice events. So I expect it would get some use, and I think there's a real danger that with your, you being theoretically underparked, under- under the hotel, that we're going to, we don't want people drifting into the neighborhoods for, for on-street parking, you know? We're not going to tolerate that.
Completely agree, we won't either.
Yeah. So I think that notion of what you do with the office space at night for the parking is really something to think through, and let us know about when you come back in.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just to follow up on that, that's why it's so important to have that connection between the two buildings. So if we're going to be cross-parking, you don't want to have to walk out and walk around people, do that once, and then next time, oh, just park on the street, right? So to make sure that the permeability between the two buildings is really super important. So, thanks.
Great. I could maybe expand on that just a little bit, because it's one item that we didn't touch on, that we are exploring kind of a pedestrian connection underground for that exact reason.
Yes.
We do want activation on the street, of course, but as you identify, if, if it's a hassle once, people aren't going to do it again.
That's a good thought, Dr. Strangor, that underground connection like they've got between the Weston and the Galleria, that's a, is a real good thought. Okay, that's all I have for, for now, I think. Member Risher, go ahead.
Can you go back to where you show the overall view? And I don't know if there's one that shows the current state with the trees and what it's going to be along that western edge.
Now that I know there's numbers on the slides.
Okay.
Let me see here.
My, my concern is, okay, and I understand, somebody told me that the trees are not necessarily, like, some may be invasive, and so there's a bunch in there, but it appears that we're going to be losing a lot of the trees, and that is a buffer. And even if a lot of these trees are scrub trees, it currently mitigates all kinds of things, noise, sound, air pollutants even, when you look at how trees function. And if you could bump up the number of trees along the pond, I think that would be great, you know, do as much as you possibly can there, because, you know, this is going to be really very visually dramatic to take so many of them out.
Point well taken, and I think we put a lot of time and effort into it. Councilmember Risher, so maybe Director Milner could expand upon the forester, city forester.
Yeah, the previous iterations Luther, our city forester, was out there looking at them, so just like you mentioned, Member Risher, a lot of invasives, a lot of trees in poor health, so taking those out here is the majority of them. Because of the stormwater, you get those invasive species, a lot of cottonwoods and stuff like that down there, but.
True, they're invasive, but they're still, they are nature's little air filters and they are sucking up carbon, so, you know, like, what we can do to mitigate losing those, I think, would be good.
Yeah, take a careful look at that, too. They've been a nice buffer for Bristol Court, especially in the summertime, winter time.
Point well taken.
Yeah, and I think our team will fully engage with Director Milner's team as we get into construction of the Phase 1 improvements, which includes the entire site plan to make sure that there, it's handled in accordance with city expectations.
Okay, all right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, the, let's move on to our next and final action matter. And Member Risher's had a heart-to-heart with our city manager and succumbed to his first ways of this. I think he'd actually be a great fit for that position over there, and so I'm grateful that you've, that you've agreed that you would serve in that capacity on the, as a city rep on the Noise Oversight Committee for the MAC. You're comfortable with that?
I am, and I even made it to the 8:00 AM meeting Sunday morning when we were in DC that covered this.
Yeah, that's always an interesting one.
So that was, that was very good.
Good, okay. Well, let's, let's, do you, Assistant Manager Schaefer, is there anything you want to say there?
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
I think we're ready to do the motion.
I think we just need a motion, and then just to clarify, it is a two-year term, so her term would technically begin in June.
All right, very good. Is there a motion to appoint Councilmember Julie Risher to represent the city of Edina on the Metropolitan Airport Commission Noise Oversight Committee?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion by Member Agnew, second by Member Pierce, to appoint our colleague Julie Risher to represent the city of Edina on the Metropolitan Airport Commission's Noise Oversight Committee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. All right, Manager comments, Assistant Manager Schaefer, anything you want to comment on?
I will have one very brief comment, which is just to remind council members that because this is our first meeting back after the NLC trip, if those who attended could give a brief statement, a statement that describes the benefit you received or information you received or a presentation you attended would suffice.
That's, that was the first thing I was going to ask about. I was eager to hear what some of the sessions were that they had, they all attended and what they got out of it, so thank you for that. And I saw Member Risher looking at her notes, so I would go right to her, for her, her comments.
Okay, I'm not going to read my notes all the way through, actually, I'm not going to do that, but it was a really good experience, I'm glad I went, I'm very grateful that I was able to do it at the beginning of my term. I was able to have conversations with people from surrounding suburbs on a whole host of issues, including buildable area, franchise fees, and PUD, so that was really good. Also met people, had a really great conversation with individuals, an individual from California. My biggest takeaway is that there are a lot of tools that we can be using, and I'm going to be going through my notes and really kind of distilling that information and putting those to use. There were panels that were very informative, the noise panel was very informative on Sunday morning, but I also attended one that had to do with equity and really looking at your CIP through an equity lens, really trying to think about where the resources are going. And thinking about Edina, I want to look at a map, I want to see where all the TIF districts are, I think there's parts of Edina where we're not using TIF, and, you know, just also thinking about where our resources are going for parks and which neighborhoods maybe are not receiving as much support as other neighborhoods are. So it was great, I did have a conversation with somebody who said, you know, this is a wonderful event for focusing on federal, but really you want to go to the event that's the summit, because that's a deep dive into municipal issues. And I think in terms of where my learning curve is right now, I think that would be a much better use of my time, so next year I'd be, you know, happy to go to that one instead of the DC one. I also heard that going to the state event is really good, because it's a deep dive into purely Minnesota issues, so I don't know if Duluth is in my future or not, but I just wanted to put that out there, so appreciate the opportunity, thank you, taxpayers of Edina.
What's the summit event?
It's, I think it's the CU in Duluth, the League of Minnesota Cities.
Oh, Minnesota Cities.
There's also a summertime National League of Cities event.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think it's in Atlanta this year.
I think it's in November.
Okay. Member Jackson.
Well, thank you, so, yeah, thank you to the taxpayers of the city of Edina, it is incredible learning experience, and I have to say, the first thing we saw was probably the most impactful, because they started out with bagpipes, and I thought if we are Edina, based on a Scottish name, at some point we would, ought to have bagpipes, but I learned a ton, too. One of the things that the National League of Cities is doing is creating a national housing supply accelerator. They rolled out, they announced it, I don't think it's built yet, but they're putting a lot of time and energy into trying to address this housing issue, which is happening in every community, and so I was pleased to see that. They're creating a boot camp for infrastructure grants, and I'm looking forward to learning about that, to see, you know, where the money's going. There was a panel on lobbying, and they talked a lot about rail safety, and one of the things that I'd like to do before we leave tonight is get your input, I'd like to have a little bit stronger statement that we can share with our federal delegation as well as our state delegation on asking for more responsiveness from the railroads and, and looking into rail safety programs. I attended, with Member Pierce, a program on municipal bonds and equity. It was a packed room, I don't think they anticipated as many people were interested in going as did. And another initiative that the National League of Cities is doing is a public finance initiative, and they're looking at different ways, not just in hiring, but when we hire consultants, where are we looking when we're doing municipal financing, where's the money, who are the people who are the financiers that we're working with? So in everything, trying to find that, more inclusion, not just in a meeting that we have, but in everybody that we're hiring and working with. And there's a lot of information that was packed into that that I have not unpacked yet. I attended the First Tier Cities event, which they talked about the soul of a place and the economic benefits of building great places, and so when we're talking about plazas and places to shop and things, we've got a lot of that going on, and a lot of the attention was on that, and ways that zoning can help with that. But they also talked about the importance for business incubators to not talk about startups, but to scale ups, and I thought about our innovation center, and that's something that's really desperately needed all across the country, and I'm proud that we are an innovator here in Edina with that. Went to an electric cars panel, driveelectric.gov is looking at that, and we're, there are two different ways that the funding is going, one is for corridors, so along 35 or 94 places where people can get charged when they're traveling from state to state, but then also community grants for building out EV charging stations in the community. We had a lot of coverage in the afternoon general session, one of the things that was interesting is that in the federal legislation that's been passed, they've also created this Justice 40 mapping tool. So while Edina is overall a pretty prosperous city, we can use our GIS data and census data and census tracts to identify where, and I know we're doing some of this already, but I'm pleased to see that this is something that the federal government is working on as well, so you can really figure out where those pockets are in your community that need some extra attention. Really interesting panel on public safety, they start out saying social ills, we've put all of our social ills at the feet of the police, and talking about ways to have police being enforcing laws and policing and some of the other things that we've asked them to take on, to try and find more help so that the police officers can be recruited and retained, retained doing the job that they studied for and really want to do. And the next day, we had a big panel on synthetic drugs, that was pretty scary. Tom Vilseth spoke about the US Department of Agriculture and the different ways that they're investing, including in housing. Marcia Fudge from HUD spoke that we are a million or houses short in this country. Oh, and then the legislative update that I went to with Manager Neal, that was really scary. Lot of really, really big legal changes going on. One case to follow is the California Restaurants Association versus Berkeley, which is Berkeley banned natural gas stoves, and the pushback is to then preempt local police power. So regardless of what you think about natural gas stoves, taking away a city's police power is a really big deal, and so that's a case that I'm going to be following. And finally, I always enjoy seeing Mitch Landre, he was part of the closing assembly, he's the administration's lead on the Infrastructure Act, and he's a lot of fun to listen to, and he said it's prompted $400 billion in private sector investments, and I thought that was pretty exciting to hear, but he's just very entertaining. Jill Biden talked about education and job training that we don't do here in Edina, so, but it was great, the congressional visits were great, we raised lots of issues with our congressional delegation, and I hope that we can get some movement on rail safety. So those are my comments.
Thank you for that. Member Pierce?
Thank you, so I'll just add a couple. One of the things that, that really struck me, so I, I like the fact that this is National League of Cities, and it's actually not focused on Minnesota, so I have the opposite, the opposite thought, because I think it was encouraging to talk to other cities, other states about what they were doing. And so I spent a lot of time in the equity space, and so Member Jackson talked about one of those, but I also attended, that was the municipal bonds, and so I won't go into that one, but I also attended a session on water equity and a session on digital equity. And so both of those kind of struck me to start thinking about Edina, and are we really focused enough on the future? And so this kind of concept, having a different balance of are we making decisions, are we actually making future decisions but weighing a little too heavily on how it makes us feel today? And so some of that actually came up tonight, right? And so if we continue to make decisions and we weigh too heavily on how they make us feel today, then I think it precludes us from being as aggressive as I think we need to be from a future perspective. And where it actually came out in one of the sessions I attended was digital equity. And so we're, and we're, we approved the project with the zoning for the US One to put in fiber, that's awesome. And if you look at your, look at our GIS data and you take the view of race and equity, so I actually did a follow-up with Heidi after the session, and you look at the map, you see all of the diversity, BIPOC is in the southeast quadrant. And so what could or should we be doing to make sure that more broadly across our community, people have access to those types of services? What could we be doing from a workforce perspective to say, let's skill up our entire community so that, right, they have access to those digital jobs, right? To actually create people wanting to be a part of our community because of the, the job opportunities, but hire skilled jobs, not just when we talk about workforce, I think a lot of times we think about, we're heavy on the service industry, if you will. And so in the digital equity, the one that I, the session I attended, that was kind of the, part of the talk was, right, there are communities that don't have access, and there are communities that do have access, but their residents can't leverage it, right? And so I, that really stuck with me. The rail safety, that really stuck with me, that was a really good session, and then it made me think about, are there creative things that we could be doing now? I don't know that space very well, but one of the things that this conference does is it, right, it makes you start to think about other areas, and you kind of want to do a little deeper dive to learn more. And for rail safety, like, simple things like, I don't know, I assume that if rail is coming through Edina, if it gets within the city limits, there's limits on how fast it can move or things like that. And I think to share with our community, while we may not be in a position to do certain things, we can at least communicate, these are the protocols that we have, these are the things that we're doing. And the one that I think I shared with Member Jackson, they talked about they talked about us looking at our own railway. And so they do this process of looking to find if there are repairs that need to be made, but that kind of activity so that we're more aware of how safe our rail actually is and not just relying on the rail industry to tell us. So that, I thought that was interesting. I mentioned the equity and investing. And then the last was just, there was no session that talked about GIS and process refinement and better use of data. But I would say just about everything I attended, right, that was a theme. Better process, using better data to inform decisions. So I thought it was awesome. And then I will say, I got to see my cousin, who works in the House as a deputy chief. So that was kind of cool. So, that's it.
Thank you. Member Agnew?
So I want to echo what Member Rissler said of just the timing of this conference, I think, in our term was particularly impactful for me. One of the sessions that I went to was all around housing programs that are available through HUD that can provide funding and grants to local communities to help with their affordable housing initiatives. And in that session, I'm like, they went really deep into the weeds about all of the different grant types, and it just made me realize there's a lot that I need to still uncover about what are we leveraging as a city, but at least gave me more information about paths to investigate and to learn about. Then the other one that I went to also is the railway infrastructure and really around like the current state of that. And the only thing I'll add to this is there was an app that they announced or they mentioned. It's called Ask Rail, and it gives first responders the ability to identify what's being carried. So apparently that information is provided at the state level, but it's not something that the state then disseminates to individual communities. But it is data that is available through this app. And so just thinking about ways that technology is and can be used. I think that the biggest takeaway for me, though, and this is partially tied to our day on the Hill and meeting with our representatives, was just the bigger picture of how us as local elected officials influence and advocate for the things that are important to us in Edina at that federal level. And so I was able to, you know, speak about climate change and the affordability of housing within Edina to our senators and our representatives. And that was just a really eye-opening experience about how all of this works and plays together. So I really appreciated that. And then kind of the, maybe doubling down on Member Pierce's point of like connecting with other elected officials. I also really appreciated connecting with people that are just right up the street, like even our peers in like St. Louis Park and Minnetonka, Bloomington. And I think it made me think about, like, are there other ways that we can more closely collaborate? And maybe that's something that's already happening, but that was the first time I was really interacting with or collaborating with those other electeds in our local vicinity here. And so just thinking about sharing best practices and thinking about how we're sharing what it is that we're experiencing as a city was just really interesting.
You know, I tend to forget that everybody isn't having the same experience. You know, I'm with these mayors from these other towns off and on, and so you're talking about issues that are common and collaborating. But I think it would be nice to extend that to councils as well. So like the experience you guys, that you all had in DC, if we could extend that out with some of our near neighbors anyway, Richfield, Bloomington, St. Louis Park, Minnetonka, Eden Prairie, you know, we've got a kind of a natural arc of folks that we could work with, and best practices is certainly something to think about. James mentioned something that's been kind of rolling around in my head here recently, and that is, I remember when I first got on the council, we were just doing the work of the day, and it wasn't nearly the volume that it is now. And you can get all caught up in the work of the day because there's so much to do. But you forget to do your visioning. So I remember raising the issue with the guy who was in the mayor. I remember in a conversation like this at the end of the meeting, I said, when are we going to talk about what we want our town to look like in 20 years? And we've done that. We did it with Bureau and looked at the future of Edina, but we haven't, I wonder when the last time was we did that? It was eight years ago, maybe? Five years ago?
Yes, around the time of the comprehensive plan, 2015, I think.
Yeah, so, so I mean, that's something that we should start talking about as a council. You know, is it time to revisit that and engage people in our community? And have this, because when we did it last time, we had 250 people involved in that process out of Braimar. It was, it really generated some really great direction. And it might be time to check to see, are we doing things that are consistent with that vision that we established then, or do we need to pivot and go some other direction? So give that some thought. For me, let's see, Monday, Director Milner and Pete from the Fire Department and Jeff Brown were over at the Legislature testifying at the Capitol, House Capitol Bonding Committee on the two projects we have that are up for potential bonding money. And that went pretty well. Our speakers did a great job. And Representative Ellison was a real good leader for all of us on that. And then, was it just yesterday, I think it was, participated in a session with the county that Chris Latandra set up. They brought in some people from Harvard and the Foundation in New York to talk about loneliness and isolation and sort of the mental health issues that we're seeing. I could only stay for half of it because I had to head to the Legislature. So I was there for the morning session where they were identifying, admiring the problem. And then they were coming up with some solutions, but we were really well represented there. Stacy Stanley was there, Erica Allenberg, the chair of the school board, was there. We had four or five students there. And so it was Minnetonka Mayor, Hopkins Mayor, Hopkins School Board, had a lot of students. And that was a worthwhile session. And I'll gather up all those notes from those folks. And they had even brought along with them a guy who was a graphics illustrator.
How cool.
And it was the most beautiful printing I've ever seen a guy do freehand as he recorded these thoughts that were emanating from the group. And then I know a lot of us have had, the last thing, US Postal Service. You know, we talked about that. We touched on that briefly. I've had so many calls from people who are getting lousy mail service in Edina. And they say they talk to their friends in other communities, and it's not happening. Minneapolis is getting their mail. Bloomington's getting their mail. And so I don't know what's going on, but I don't know if a trip over to the postal annex is worth it to find a supervisor to find out what's going on. I'll try to do that. I know Manager Neal has tried. I think, Lisa, you've had fielded a lot of these calls. We've tried to enlist Dean Phillips and Angie Craig, people from outside our district, to help on this issue, but we're not getting the kind of assistance that we need. We're, I don't know if it's pure manpower shortage or what it is, workforce shortage?
Sorry, it is common across the metro, maybe not with the exact people in Minneapolis that we've been hearing from, but I have been hearing that pretty much regionally and have not heard of any real good reasons why. So we'll keep looking into that.
So I'll try to go over there and figure out what I can find out and let you know. And that's it for me. Does anybody else think of anything they wanted to add?
Yeah, I have one more.
Okay.
Thank you. So last Friday, March 31st, was the Transgender Day of Visibility. And so just wanted to, one, like, raise awareness for that and raise visibility to it. And then just kind of offer some reminders or suggestions of ways that we can continue to be inclusive in this sense at the city level. So like easy things, like including pronouns within email signatures, I think is a really great practice. And then thinking about ways that we can include gender-inclusive language. One that popped out today is instead of having, you know, a phrasing of thanking men and women, thanking people for their service, and just thinking through the ways that we're kind of presenting in that sense for the city. So just a call out.
And what you caused me to think of one other thing, and that is, we have a new Met Council member representing Edina, and she was at Rotary this morning.
Yeah.
Angelie Cameron is her name, and she lives in West Edina. It's the first time, when I've been involved in local government, we've had somebody from Edina representing Edina, and then of course, it's a broader district than just Edina. Former Mayor Molly Cummings from Hopkins was our just immediate past rep, but Steve Elkins has had that job, who's in the House now, and different people. And we've been well represented, but it's nice to have Angelie there. Graduate of Carlton and went to, she got her master's in Chicago and worked at the University of Chicago and worked at the University of Minnesota as a biomedical research person. And then she works, she's been working with, she's on maternity leave right now, but she's been working with council on Asian Pacific Minnesotans and their issues that they've been involved in. So great to have her representing our community. And that's it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second.
And a motion by Member Jackson, a second by Member Agnew to adjourn the city council meeting while it's still Tuesday, April 4th, 2023. And any further discussion? Those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. The meeting of April 4th, 2023, the Edina City Council stands adjourned.